Good evening. I would like to open the 21st meeting of fiscal year 2019 of the Milton Planning Board. I'm Cheryl Taggias, the Chair.
Denise Swinton, member.
Rashbiel, a member.
William Clark, Planning Director.
April Anderson-Lamaroe, member.
Blackbird, member.
Okay. On the administrative items on the agenda, our next meeting date is April 25th, which will be the last meeting of this fiscal year. Brian, who's not running for reelection, will be participating by phone at that meeting, but...
It's not our last one of the fiscal year?
It's not?
We have May and June.
Then, since the election, then?
The election, yes.
I'm sorry, okay. Fiscal year and election dates don't coincide?
They do not.
That's an odd one. All right, well, let's just rephrase that, then. Our next meeting will be the last one where this board, as currently constituted, will have all members present. So, if anyone wants to say anything to Brian before he leaves tonight, you might want to.
Well, I thank you, Brian. I've learned a lot from you.
Thanks, please.
It's been fun.
Absolutely, yeah. Can't believe you're escaping.
So, it'll now be, since the bylaw was accepted by the Attorney General to change the term to three years from five, those of us who have five-year terms will be rotating off into three-year terms for the new folks, so...
So even, oh, so us, too?
No, so we're all five-year. We ran all under five years, but the ones coming forward will be three-year.
Yes, okay.
So, we can thank Brian for his five years of service. All right.
You're welcome.
And then, we have town meeting. So, those are the ones that Bill referenced. And then, what we have now for regularly scheduled meeting after that would be May 9th, and that would be subject to change if town meeting lasts longer than two nights. So, before we get to new business, is there anyone who would like to address the board on a matter that's not relative to Walcott Woods for our citizen speak portion of our meeting? Okay, seeing none, we'll move right on to new business. And Bill will give us the background of the town of Milton, Chapter 91 Town Landing Dock Presentation. We have a guest from Child Engineering, right?
Yep, that's right. My name's Andrew Nilson from Child Engineering.
Welcome, Andrew.
Thank you.
The town was, the town applied for and was granted a license for the pier down at the wharf in 1993. It was signed by the governor, signed by DEP, the commissioner, and the Chapter 91 people. The permit was never recorded at the Registry of Deeds, as is required by the permit. Therefore, the permit became null and void. And we brought the permit forward so that we get a new permit, and that's what Andrew is going, has been doing for us. He's done the engineering. You have on Dropbox a complete package, and it's 13 pages of what the dock looks like and where we're going. Andrew can give you the engineering part of it. What we're doing is, we're updating the permit since it wasn't recorded, and we're going to take in the current ramp, the town's wall, and the pier itself, and that's it. This is step one, so that we moved forward with a dredging project and retooling of the ramp itself. For the rest of it, I'll let Andrew make the explanation.
The reason this comes to the Planning Board?
There are three different signatures required. One is from Mr. Dennehy. The second one is from the towns, it's called a zoning certificate, and it's done by whoever is in charge of zoning. In this case, it would be the zoning enforcement officer, who says that the dock and its area is up to whatever the current zoning is. In this case, it would be Mr. Prundock, since there is no zoning for the dock. So, Joe Prundock signs that page. The third page is notification to the, to the Planning Board, and I will let Andrew make that explanation.
Thank you. Andrew?
So, as Bill was saying, we require a number of signatures for the Chapter 91 application before the state will finalize it and issue a license. One of them is for the Planning Board, which is what we're doing here today. We require a signature from the Planning Board to say that we presented it to you, you've answered any questions that you may or may not have, and that you give acknowledgement that you've received them. So, once we have that, then we process this through the Chapter 91 office in Boston, and they should issue the Chapter 91 license, the new Chapter 91 license. Bill did mention that this is a structure that was originally licensed in 1993. It's been installed and on site since 1993, and it's gone through some relatively minor changes in the intervening decade since then. But, all in all, it's the same structure. It provides recreational birthing for small vessels for recreational, I guess, boats. And then, it also provides some dingy storage areas for people that want to use their moorings in the Ponsett River. And then, it also provides a location for educational entities to bring their, I guess, their skulls and launch them and use them for training purposes. So, as Bill said, this is part of a larger, I guess, plan of development for the area. The next step after this, which is not something that's covered under this Chapter 91 license, it would be under a future permitting process. So, and whenever that does happen, you'll probably see my face again here to go through the dredging portion of it, because currently, the floating dock is not usable during all tide cycles. It's actually, we conducted a hydrographic survey of it roughly a year ago. It's a little hard to see, but on the drawing that I have printed out here, you've got the, the riverwalk here, the gangway out to the floating docks, and the low-tide line is all the way out at the very end of the floating dock. When it was originally licensed, that low-tide line was all the way in close to the shore. So, the future plan is to conduct dredging so that it can be accessed during all tide cycles like it was originally planned to.
Andrew, can you just repeat yourself in turn, but have the board turn so that the audience can see you're pointing?
Sure. All right, so as I was saying, we conducted a hydrographic survey of the area roughly one year ago. What we've, what we can see here is the, this is the inshore end, the Ponsett Riverwalk. There's a gangway that pedestrians used to access the floating dock, and these boxes represent the floating dock. You've got a line right here, this is outshore of the floating dock, at the very outshore end. That's the low-tide line. Basically, anything outshore of that is wet all the time during all tide cycles. Anything inshore of that is subject to tidal flow. So, based on the survey, we've got basically a floating dock sitting in an area that is dry during certain portions of the tide cycle. Well, as we were saying, that's a future, I guess, future design plans for the actual site. Once again, not being addressed under this particular Chapter 91 license, what we're doing is basically just taking the existing structure, bringing it back up to the standards that it should be under. So, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question. I heard recently in another meeting on an unrelated issue that there's some discussion about removing the dam at the chocolate factory, and I wonder what that might do to the water flow. Would that do anything to the slow-tide line?
Uh, no, that shouldn't change at all. I can't speak exactly to what the plans are for that.
Wouldn't change your design, in any way?
No, no.
That wouldn't change the design of the ramp either.
Thank you.
Just to confirm, we're basically renewing something that's been there since 1993.
That's correct.
Because they were a lot longer than 1993. 1993 happens to be the time that, we've had a dock in place for over 100 years. The dock, the dock permits were required when the AC/EC management plan came into effect, and the state tried to update the Chapter 91 regs, meaning that everybody with the dock had to have a permit. We applied for the permit. We had all the right signatures. It was sent back to the town, and in 1993, we had 60 days to file it with the registry. We didn't do it. So, what we thought was recorded has been sitting. It's not, we have to redo the permit now. This is that process.
So, this, I guess, mistake, if you'd call it that, was uncovered during the study work that the Master Plan Implementation Committee was conducting with Child Engineering's Assistance on the Water Side part of it. And you'll recall that we approved, as Planning Board funding, you know, for the work that they've been doing. So, this is the next step in that whole process, right? So, any other questions? All right, so then you just need a signature?
I need your signature.
All right, so we can do that afterwards?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
But, oh, you said other than Carrberry-Walcott, so that would have included this group. Yeah, Carrberry-Walcott, we still have a public hearing open, so we're still taking during that. Yeah. I'm sorry, did you?
Quick question.
Yes.
Do you know what the depth that you're going to excavate underneath the dock would be, just?
It'd be proposed to minus four low water, which is generally what is required under the Massachusetts Small Dock and Pier Guidance.
Any other questions for Andrew before he leaves from the audience here? No, okay. All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. See ya.
Okay, just while we wait for the transition over to the public hearing, which we're right, we can start any moment, I just wanted to, I guess we can do it under administrative, announce that we, the clerk received a letter from the Attorney General's office saying that they approved the zoning bylaws that were passed at the Fall Town Meeting. So, that's good. And there was, and you'll see you have a letter, there's, there is some, again, some discussion about limiting bedroom with respect to fair housing. And so, you just, it comes up in the Brook Road.
Overlay.
Yeah. Because family, or family size is a protected, familial status is a protected class, as well as race, color, religion, sex, and national, and national origin. But, anyway, you can, we can discuss that further at another time when it's on the agenda. I just wanted to point out that they, we received the letter, and it's in your packet. So, we will now move to the continuation of the Walcott Woods Special Permit Public Hearing. And I understand that we have some further news with respect to the Historical Commission and the barn. And so, Ned, you're going to give us an update, and then Stephen O'Donnell from the Historical Commission's here, and we'll ask Stephen to come up, too. So, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having us back. Ned Corcoran on behalf of Walcott Residential, and Jack Dolly is here as well. With respect to the Carriage Barn, we are, we have an A&R plan to present this evening for review. Hopefully, it demonstrates how the lot will be created. But there's, we're closing in on settlement agreement with Kevin Walker relative to his plans to acquire the barn and relocate it to the parcel A land that we will be deeding to him pending the outcome of this zoning. But we're essentially there.
So, you have a plan to, that you're pulling, that you have pulled up?
Yeah, so we, one component of the settlement agreement is approval of the, of an A&R plan that would allow... So, if you back up to the first plan quickly, it's in two sheets. The first sheet shows the property to be acquired by Walcott Residential upon the grant of special permit and running of all appeals periods. So, they, Walcott owns the left side of the property, approximately 19 acres, and then they will acquire two parcels. The first is outlined like this, and that is owned by one entity, owned by the Carrberries. And then, this other parcel is owned by a separate Carrberry entity. So, this, these two lots will be combined for purposes of the, of the special permit. Separately, upon acquisition of these, we're carving out the property in two sets of interests here. And Bill, if you go to the second page, it shows it more closely. It is a, it is a one-acre parcel here that includes approximately half of the existing driveway in fee. And then, there's a series of easements, a open space easement here, an exclusive driveway easement here, and a non-exclusive driveway here with a reservation of easements for access to the detention basin, the installation and maintenance of the sewer, and other access to this property for maintenance purposes. All of those interests are being deeded to Walker simultaneously with the closing on the acquisition of the balance of the property. The Carriage Barn would be relocated to approximately this location. His driveway would continue up here and turn into his property. This would be built in the area that's just above that turn into the driveway, and this is the area where the driveway continues now up to Walcott that would be filled in and made part of the open space. And so, the zoning provides that the minimum amount of lot area to be available for, for this special permit process is 46 acres. The entirety of the site comprises 47 and change, so we can convey in fee one acre, and then the balance we can convey in easements. This area remains subject to the bylaw relative to, it's within the 75-foot no disturbs zone. There are limited things that can be done here. But the, those easements are being conveyed subject to the requirements of the, of the bylaws that relates to this property.
So, the driveway's in the same place?
Driveway's not moving. It, right now, and this was significant for Mr. Walker's, he simply owns an easement over that driveway. That driveway is on land that is, it's on, it is owned by the Carrberries, and he has that easement that allows him to come up into his property. He's, he will have fee interest ownership in this portion of the driveway, exclusive easement use of this area of the driveway, which is obviously important to him.
Thank you. Brian?
So, two questions. One is, is will you be filing for an A&R prior to, or will that, will that happen after the, after the appeal period passes?
We're asking that the plan be endorsed as part of the special permit process tonight, if possible. It would be held as an, it will be held in escrow with a deed and other documents associated with the closing. Nothing, everything's held in escrow until the actual closing on the purchase of this property, and then there's a simultaneous conveyance out of this portion of the property. We need to get all those, those pieces of the exhibits together as part of the overall settlement.
So, I haven't taken a closer look at the plan, but my second question is just, I guess, does, does either side, your side or our side, or Mr. Walker's side, so any side, want to show the barn on here? Because for me, that...
It was important to them.
To the Walkers?
To the, to the Walkers, to show the proximate location. We needed to demonstrate that it complies with setbacks for zoning. This is a non-buildable lot, so it's be combined with his existing lot. This would be an accessory.
Right, I guess that's my concern, right?
It's an accessory structure that's allowed
Yeah.
to be built as a barn. It's not a dwelling. He's not intending to use it as a dwelling, and it, and it meets the setbacks relative to side yard. I've shown that with Joe Prundock. He's, he's reviewed that relative to compliance with zoning from a building permit perspective.
So, parcel X, Bill, can you scroll down?
So, this gets...
Do you want to go that way?
So, I see it. So, that's parcel?
So, come back down.
X is at the top.
Come back down. Oh, bring it up. I'm sorry, bring it up. So, the property line, bigger picture. This is the property line that exists today for this lot, okay? The one, so the driveway is on this property. There's a five-foot wide planting strip that's going with it, allows him to plant a hedge along the edge of the property. That's being conveyed to him in fee. That's being carved from this lot. This is being carved from this lot. The combination of parcel X, which is here, and parcel Y, which is here, make up parcel A, which is 4,356 square.
Okay. So, that, I can't, I'm sorry, parcel Y, I see the label now. So, parcel Y, right, right, nope, down, right, that's the label, parcel Y is right there?
That's parcel Y.
And there's the label just to the left of where your hand just was?
That's right.
Right, okay, got it. And that's identifying the square footage, because I can't read the label.
And that's 765 square feet.
And it says 765 there, too, down below?
It should, yes. And then, it's being added to 42,795, or I think it is, and that is...
It says 765, or 0, 0.02 acres.
Okay, and then down...
That's what it says right there.
Now, down towards the street, that, so now you've got parcel F.
And now, we have, yeah, so now we have parcel C, which is comprised of, parcel, open space easement.
Portion of parcel C, yep.
Right here. It is comprised of this non-exclusive driveway easement here, and it's comprised of this exclusive driveway easement here. There's also exclusive driveway easement W, which is on the... There's also exclusive driveway easement W, which is on the, this side, which is 325, 925 square feet. And a little sliver comes here.
And where's the...
925.
Summary table for that one? Above you did.
There's one here.
A1.
But that's...
That is...
The other one is, come on.
That's the one.
Here. And the other one is here.
So there's...
So this is, these are easements. They're called out as easements. This is fee.
Oh, that's why it's not a buildable lot.
It doesn't have frontage.
It has no frontage.
No frontage.
I see.
It's also less than two acres.
Right.
Because it's...
So, so that, I think there'd be two labels I'd want to see on this A&R plan. One would be that it's not a buildable lot. Can you just show me where that is?
Go back up.
It's at the top.
Right there.
Not to be considered a buildable lot alone. And then, the second would be, I'd probably want to see some reference, some label on the barn. We wouldn't have to have it tonight.
Proposed carriage barn?
Yeah, proposed, I would just want to see something to the effect of that this board's not endorsing necessarily the location. Because, I mean, it's meeting all zoning, I get it, but you know what I'm saying. An A&R plan typically would only show existing structures, I think. So I'd want to just, I'd prefer there'd be a label on here for illustration purposes or something.
How about if it said proximate location of proposed carriage barn? Because I think there is some concern about where it goes, right?
Yeah.
Proposed location of carriage barn relocated from...
So there it is, yeah. There are no dimensions on it, so...
Right, that's true.
But if you just, to meet zoning, must meet zoning...
Or you could just say subject to further...
Applicable to, you know, applicable to current zoning.
Yeah, I mean, it...
I get it, I just...
I mean, there's no...
We don't usually show the buildings, that's all.
Well, and I understand that, but there's no dimensions either, so it's, no one could locate it there without any dimensions. So they would have to submit a plan which shows its foundation, and in which case they'd have to meet the zoning.
He's got to apply for the building permit for the, for the foundation, he's got to, for the relocation.
Do you know if he intends to combine these lots?
No. Yeah, they're going to be...
So, so when he combines the lot, then the building will be set on a buildable lot? Because he will have combined it into a single buildable lot?
No.
With 1776, or no?
It will be part of 1776.
That's my question, so...
The accessory building to 1776.
I understand, but it's not combined today.
Yeah.
So we're showing a building on a lot that can't be, that can't be put there today until it's combined with another lot, right?
Correct. He has, he has to then do whatever he has to do ministerially.
I'd rather have it say subject to further review.
Further review by whom?
I don't think we need to specify that.
Well, it also says up here...
Yeah, tell me what notes I've got, yeah, because I don't...
It also says right here...
I don't have the plan in front of me.
Planning board endorsement does not reflect compliance with applicable zoning requirements.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Any other questions about...
Do we need an application? Do we have an A&R application?
We do not have one yet.
So, when you say...
How do we approve one without an application?
Well, we did this last time, too. Last A&R we approved, we didn't have an application for it.
Well, we're not approving anything tonight anyway, so...
Right.
We can certainly endorse as part of our, as part of our approval, as long as the application's filed.
I don't find that...
So it would just need to be filed by the 25th.
Right. Well, it would, we would like all documents to us next week.
I would love a chance to look at it, yeah, actually.
I've talked with the applicant's attorney about that, was it today or yesterday, that we really need to have everything next week, so we have time to review it before the meeting. All right, so do we need a vote then, or would you like a vote in terms of that?
Are we going to hear from the public on that topic?
Yeah, thank you for the reminder. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to us about this aspect of the Walcott Woods application?
Just this aspect?
This, just this aspect right now. And Stephen, if you'd like to, you know, comment, this is more about the subdividing of the land. Okay, all right. All right, so seeing none, I'll take a motion.
I just have one question before we move forward.
Sure.
So, so we can endorse a plan before they even own the land?
It has to be, there's...
You can't own the land until you've endorsed it.
Yeah, that's, that's been done in the past.
That's like, that's 22.
That gets, because the deed makes reference to the plan.
Yeah, this wouldn't be happening if we didn't...
So who will the applicant be?
It may be a joint applicant.
And we won't know until next week.
I like, well, we're, we are still the owner of the land, so I assume that we would be the primary applicant.
Hmm, but you don't own the land.
We do own the land. We haven't sold that land yet. Well...
No, 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 you understand my...
I understand, okay.
No, 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 you have to understand who the applicant is.
Yeah, okay.
So, that's all, you got to figure that out.
Okay, so, understanding that there's final documentation that needs to come to the board, I'll take a motion to endorse this strategy moving forward.
I don't want to endorse the strategy. I'm trying to think of what motion we can make, but...
I was going to say, we could, we could describe in theory that we're in support.
Yeah, so I would make a, I will try to make a motion.
What are we going to do without your motions?
I don't care. Actually, actually, from, from what I understand, from what I understand, my replacement is going to be way better at making motions than I am.
Oh, Kathleen. That's right.
You'll be fine. So I'm going to make a motion that the board conceptually, so conceptually...
Support.
Support this, thank you. Support the plan as shown, subject to proper application for endorsement as part of the special permit approval.
A second.
Any further discussion?
To give you what you need, Ned?
That's good for me, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay. Next, let's talk about the, more of the status of the agreement of the moving of the barn, and then we'll talk about, after that, the, the standards for the retention of the historic dwellings, which we're calling Exhibit E.
Okay.
Okay?
So we are, this was obviously an important component to the agreement, was to make sure that the board is prepared to approve the A&R plan and is on board with the notion that, without specifically endorsing it, on board with the notion that the carriage barn would be moved from its current location to Walker property, or the new property to be owned by Walker. We are down to commas and semicolons and word, final wordsmithing of the agreement and the exhibits. There are seven exhibits, including a deed, the plan, other things, and we're just finalizing that, and we expect to have that ready for signature by early next week. We just got a latest draft at 5:00 to sit in with a handful of minor things. So I think we're there, confident that we're there, and, you know, and so, that's, I know that Kevin Walker appeared at the Historical Commission meeting a couple of weeks ago. Today, I was copied on a copy of a letter that he submitted to the Historical Commission outlining his commitment to relocate and preserve the barn and providing a bond, performance bond, to payable to the Historical Commission if, if it in fact is not moved to the foundation. I think it's in the value of $50,000. So, that was arrived today. Steve obviously can comment relative to his interpretation.
Would you like to come? Sorry, Ned, to interpret?
That's fine. I'm happy to have Steve.
Welcome, Steve O'Donnell.
Thank you. Steve O'Donnell, Chair of the Historical Commission. First, I will reiterate what we said, I said last time, we are very much in favor of this proposal to relocate the carriage house. It solves a lot of problems for a lot of people. It isn't until it is, and Mr. Corcoran has great confidence that it's going to come together. We certainly hope that it will. The document that's on the screen, dated today, which is a cleaned-up version, I think Mr. Corcoran called it, of what we discussed when I was here last, is acceptable to the Historical Commission, providing that the agreement to move the carriage house is part of the special permit. One of the provisions here is that we will waive our rights under Chapter 22 to demolition of any building on the property, which is not among the three to be preserved. If for any reason this proposal does not go through, does not become part of the special permit, we will not waive our rights under Chapter 22 for the carriage house. Again, we certainly hope it goes through, but that's just in element. So, our acceptance of this is predicated on that happening. It's, and I have to say this, it's also predicated on the representations and assurance of this board that the elements that were removed from our draft of two weeks ago are indeed part of the special permit in other places. We have no reason to question that, but we're accepting this with those items deleted because we believe indeed they are included elsewhere.
That'll be part of our review between now and, and closing the hearing and voting on the special permit.
The other question I have...
Know what they are, though?
Yeah, we have them. We've gone over them, actually.
But we know, I understand. We know what we...
Specific ones, yeah.
Do we have a list? Okay, just making sure, okay.
We have the list from the, the handout, from the...
Want to make sure we're very clear.
Provided by the Historical Commission, yeah.
March 28, I think it was.
Great.
The other question I have is, has the board received a revised plan for the location of the walking path, parallel in Canton Avenue?
Not yet, and that is, all of the revised plans have not yet been received?
It was received this afternoon.
Okay. Well, let's say...
They were not received for the purpose of, so that the board could review them. We do have, we emailed late this afternoon the new iterations of all of the plans with cover memos identifying the modifications that were made from the original plan to the current draft of the plan, and they're available to review individually or collectively, but the does, I can't, we can pull out the...
But do you have, for that particular topic, do you have the plan, Bill, that can be called up on the screen? I don't, we're not going to go through all of the plans tonight, but since we have...
I have that new set of plans that I can call up on the screen. It's in Dropbox. I copied what got given to Dropbox so that I could bring it here, but you all have it in your Dropbox accounts. It got put in this afternoon, that's when we got it.
Okay, so just, I'll just make a comment about all the revised plans, is that I don't expect that we're going to go through them. None of us have seen them tonight, but while Steve's here, we should look at that plan. But then, let's all review them within the next week. If there's anything that we think is, is not consistent with what we've discussed and been incorporated into the plans, we need to make sure we get that identified as soon as we can, because of our time running short. Okay, so, yes?
Go back to just the comments that Steve made about the list that the planning board makes sure that it, I just, I don't remember what the list is, and do we all...
We reviewed it last week.
We all agreed to everything.
Yeah, and...
But my, I'm sorry, my question is...
I just don't want to say yes to something I don't remember.
My question, Cheryl, is I just want to make sure someone on Historical looks at this, and looks at this, and make sure we didn't miss anything, that's all.
Yeah, I just want to mislead.
Yeah, I mean, the, that's...
C-1, C-3, 1-1.
If we have to parse it, then I want to make sure someone checks our work.
Or what if we took, I'll find the document, the whole document, and just folded it in?
Steve, were yours from March 6?
I'm sorry?
Is it March 6, the comments that you're talking about?
No, March 27.
I have them here. So the ones that, because I, I reviewed a redline version, at the same time it was sent to Steve, it's, if, if we don't have...
March 30.
I have, well, I don't have the redline version, but I have the March 27 version, which is what we discussed last time. So these were under the, the additional, well, first of all, the carriage house was taken out because that's being addressed separately, and then there were things called additional recommendations. And the, that was, the first item has to do with particular detailed elements on the structures, and so that got kept in. And then the others had to do with, the next one had to do with the windows, the small windows on the type A, which is already on our list. Landscape features, including significant trees, the fencing, and protections during construction. So those are part of the tree preservation and protection plan and the construction management plan, and the fencing is part of the documentation that's submitted in terms of their details. So, so those, that, that's why I suggested taking these out, because I didn't want inconsistencies. When you have, if something's not caught, something gets changed one place, not caught in another place, then it just seems better to have one place to go for construction management, one place to go for tree preservation. You go to the architectural drawings for all architectural features, and you go to the landscape for all the landscape features. That's the standard way things get built. So if somebody, if it's only here and not in those places, it's likely not to get done, because this is not something the contractor's going to be focusing on daily. So that's just from my experience. So walls and fencing, so the stone, we talked about that quite a bit, all right. So the opening of the driveway and the reusing of the stone, and that was something that's already in the applicant's proposal. The walking path, which you just asked about, Steve. And then, again, securing the buildings, which we put in the draft decision. And then we've left the review prior to construction. Monitoring construction for compliance is not something we have authority to do. It's not something we have authority to impose, and it, I've talked to town council about that. So I think we said that last time also, that we couldn't do that. And then, the preservation of historic buildings after units are sold, I did talk to town council about that as well, and he agrees that because of the way the bylaw's written, that any change to the, substantial change to the exterior of the buildings would have to come back to the planning board, no matter who's the owner down the road. So we're just, I, we have to make sure that that language, he was going to think about the language a little bit, to make sure it's tightened up. But anything that's de minimis, okay? So let's say, you know, you have to paint the door, you have to paint the siding or something. But let's say you're not going to change from the existing siding, let's say it's tucco, to, you know, vinyl, or something, or something like that. That would have to come back. So that, those, so those were the things that we discussed, and again, we're going to have to do a thorough review of all the documents to make sure these things are picked up properly. Town council's reviewed as well.
Just to that, just to that point, the current draft of the, last draft of the current special permit that was reviewed speaks to the issue of future modifications to the exterior of each of those three buildings. It says that in each case that they shall require review and approval of the planning board. So, the specific language in each of those paragraphs referring to the renovation and redevelopment of those buildings, same language. It currently says prior to the issuance of a building permit, but I think we can strike out prior to the issuance of a building permit, because there might be some exterior work that would be done, that would be more than just painting, that you would want to require company, that wouldn't require a building permit, but you'd want to make sure it came back for review. So I think probably a good idea to strike that phrase.
Right. So, as far as...
But that makes enforcement difficult.
Well, you know, I think this is something to, you know, like I said, contractors not reading special permit language, it's like homeowners, right, in the future? So, one of the things that I was thinking about is, you know, just to have, just like we were talking about with other provisions, how the homeowners association has to take care of things in a certain manner, right? They should really be given a manual or a document as part of their, homeowners association documents, so the ones who own a unit within the existing structures would receive the historical requirements. So the ones who own a unit within the existing structures would receive the historical requirements. It seems like the best way, because they're not going to go back and look at special permits, most likely.
Right.
They're going to look at their homeowners association documents. I mean, it would still be protected in the special permit language, don't get me wrong. It's just that, you know, the, what we don't want is somebody inadvertently doing something and then say, "Sorry, I didn't know." You know, and then all of a sudden, the historic feature is gone, right?
That's right.
Okay. So, one of the things that I understand was still something to be discussed is the actual spec on the window?
Yeah, so there's two additional potential edits on the Exhibit E. One is that there are three places where we've referred to sheets. Those were earlier sheets from the architectural set. The pagination has changed on the architectural sets. So the new, on page two, so Paragraph B refers to Sheets H5 to H7. Deals with the, the manor house, that those, the new reference should be Sheets 12 to 14.
I'm sorry, where is it?
Second page, third sort of paragraph from the top.
Oh, H5 to 7 should change to what?
12 to 14.
Okay.
And then we drop down to the first paragraph within B, the Devens House. That changes from H1 and H2 to 2 and 3. Change, just change those. I'll give it to you. And on page 3, middle of the page.
H2 and H3. H2 and H3.
No, it's just 2 and 3. We've eliminated-
We, H1 and H2 and put in-
Sheets 2 and 3.
2 and 3.
There's no, I'm sorry, is it H2 and H3?
On-
Or just 2 and 3?
It will be just 2 and 3. We've eliminated Sheets A through, 1 through and H, 1 through, we just go on with sheet numbers. And then, on page 3, middle of the-
All right, wait, I'm sorry. You confused me. Oh, you have, the first change we made is just 12 and 14, there's no Hs with those?
Correct, there's no H.
All right, thank you. And then it's 2 and 3?
No H, right.
No H, okay.
And then on page 3, middle of the page, and Item 3, Sheets H3 and H4 becomes 6 and 7. No H.
All right. So, Ned, the portion, just going backwards, sorry. We all have a copy of the draft permit in our packets. Which page on here is what you're referring to?
Page 3 of 21, in Section 6, A, refers to Devens House.
2 of 18.
Page 3 of 18.
2, 12. A little different, is it? I'm sorry, so-
Oh, I'm sorry, I was-
Number 6.
Okay, 6A.
Small A, Devens House.
Got it.
I've actually got the long, my wrong copy. Okay, right, so, and I can fill in some sheet numbers as well, if we wanted to do that, so.
Why don't we do that part later, and let's just get the language part for the-
Specific reference is, the end of, the last paragraph and, last sentence in Paragraph A reads, "Future modifications to the exterior of the Devens House shall require review and approval of the planning board prior to the issuance of building permit."
So strike prior to the issuance of building permit.
Right.
All right.
Paragraph C, as you wrap over into the top of page 3, says, last sentence says, "Future modifications to the exterior of the Walcott House shall require review and approval of the planning board prior to the issuance of a special permit." Strike that same language prior to the issuance of a building permit. And in E, manor house, same language in the last sentence. Strike prior to the issuance of a building permit.
So Steve, you see what we did to this now?
Oh, yes.
Okay, all right, good. All right, so then, back to Exhibit E, the windows, right?
Right.
So that's on, applies to all of the buildings? I see it in B3 under Devens.
There was, I think the discussion was to a particular set of windows in one of the buildings.
All three.
All three. They all were going to be Jeldwyn.
Right.
And then, Jack was meeting with Jeldwyn representative to determine if there was a more specific specification for the windows that should be used. We can leave it as Jeldwyn. We know that with respect to these three buildings, we've agreed to come back to review the plans before we apply for building permit. And we can have more specific information at that point, when we do that, or we can, you know, hold and put in a specific.
Well, I think we should-
Review by, this review is by who? Historical or planning?
I think, I'd like to hear Stephen's thought about that. But one of the things I'd like to point out is, I only see reference to windows for the Devens, and I think you, did you just say you intend that to be for all three?
No, they're, they're in all three.
If you look at manor house, Section 1B, first page, Jeldwyn windows.
Got it, okay.
B, Section, Section 1, says Jeldwyn windows.
So my understanding-
Section 5 under Walcott.
Okay, so my understanding is, that you brought in a sample, that's a wood window that's clad on the exterior.
Those were windows-
It's in the back of my car. I just took it there today. I'm going to respectfully say, I won't say it was, Steve and I have agreed that we would come up with a specific window. Chairman of the Historical Commission and I have agreed that we would cite a specific brand name and series name of a Jeldwyn window. I met with the rep yesterday, asked him for literature, he sent me something this morning. I said, "I want to see the real window," so that I can reach agreement with the Historical Commission on the window. I do not want to leave it open ended.
All right, good. Because one of the Historic, Historical Commission members, who's an architect, called me, architect to architect, to speak about the window specifications. She said that they were discussed at their meeting, that the intent is to, or the desire is to have a wood window that meets the sight lines, which is the dimensions of the existing window, right? That's always a challenge in the historic, because you add, you put insulated glass in, and you need a bigger bite, if you will, to hold the glass in place, right? So, that's one thing. And then the other is, understanding that maintenance on the exterior of wood windows is something that homeowners don't love, that they have discussed the possibility of having it be clad on the exterior and wood on the interior. Did I represent that correctly, Steve?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So, in your conversations with the rep today, I mean, most window companies have all different grades and lines and all that, right?
I think we're beating this horse. I understand the assignment.
Okay. But, we're, you're going to have an agreement by next week, so it's something that can be incorporated in?
There will be a specific name there.
Okay.
In three places.
All right.
It'll be clad on the outside, main and three.
And wood on the inside?
Wood on the inside.
And with sight lines to match.
All right. We have three different buildings with three different styles of buildings from three different eras. So, I'm not going to say yes, because we have a building that was in this, we have a 50s building, and we have a this building, so.
Were they all, Stephen, do you know if they were all double hungs?
Most of them are.
Believe most of them are, yeah.
I'm sure there's some decorative windows somewhere. There's no awning.
Or casement, yeah, okay. All right, so, is color part of the historic aspect of the, of the windows?
Haven't even thought about it. However, Northland intends to keep the exterior colors after renovation essentially the same as they are today. So, it would seem that window sash colors would be selected appropriate to that.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, that's the issue about clad, is depending upon what the standard colors are.
Well, when I, when I looked at the Jeldwyn website, they had 25 or 27 different colors of cladding.
So you'll find something to match.
So I'm sure that-
Okay.
They can find something appropriate.
Okay. So then, is there any other item that you'd like to draw, bring to our attention, Steve? Thank you, Jack.
The only thing, since there's been a couple of minor changes here, on the April 11th, today's, on the final page, D1, at the end of the second line, we would eliminate the last two words in the second line, wooden arches, and the first two words of the following line, over windows. Those are much later additions to the manor house, and they should not be retained.
Okay.
I think his other question was relative to the location of what?
Walking path, right. So, we were going to look at that up here, unless there's anything else, if anybody has on the list? Okay, then we'll go ahead and look at the location.
He says it is.
It's, well, it's outside the, it's outside the trees.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I'd like you to table this to the next week. I want to confirm with the architect that she has followed the instructions-
Okay.
-that I gave her, in accordance with my conversation with the Historical Commission.
Well, the next, I guess when we say next week, then, materials need to be sent to the planning department, and then, planning department's going to need to send to the Historical Commission. We don't have a meeting until-
I can do that.
-the 25th.
Well, the note that-
Bless you.
Bless you.
She's invited, she did it.
I want to, I want to confirm. I've done this with Steve, with the Chair of the Commission. I want to know that it's where I have agreed with the Chair of the Commission as a representative for the Commission. They have wanted it, and I just want to double check that.
Okay.
If this is right, then it won't, I will provide the Chair of the Commission a copy of whatever drawing, so that he can either approve or not.
Can we just hear what the agreement is, in case anybody wants to speak to it tonight?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I just want to hear what the agreement is, in case anybody in the public wants to speak to it tonight.
The agreement is to move the left-hand half of the walkway through the meadow, inside the tree bu-
Instead of the trees.
Inside the buffer, rather than through the buffer.
So there will be no walkway through the trees?
Yes, at the right-hand end of what is the existing driveway, yes. Towards Mr. Walker's is definitely through the trees. It's a very deep tree buffer. At the other end, past the meadow, the buffer is much thinner, much narrower, and to cut, finish cutting a path through there would diminish the buffer. So by having it go through the meadow, you maintain as much buffer as you can.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to that particular detail?
No, no pay.
Yes.
Could it be possible to see those?
I'm sorry, can you just come forward and state your name for the record, please? Thank you.
Yeah, free. Tucker Smith, 1632 Canton Avenue. My question is, will those drawings be available, you know, online for people to take a look at?
So, as soon as they're received, they'll be put on the website, Bill, while they're simultaneously sent to us?
Okay, great, thank you.
And if you have questions or comments, if you look at them before our next meeting, please send them to Bill. Because, no, you're looking at me like, "Don't send anything to me."
No, that's fine. I did have one thing. These files are really big, so when you open it, your computer's thinking and working. They are big, so.
Well, I see.
It'll open.
It'll open, sorry.
Yes, I mean, it's opened here, and this is-
Or they can come-
If not, there'll be a hard copy of town hall.
There'll be a hard copy, hard copy here.
Hard copy right beside Julia's desk.
Okay. Anything else, then, Steve? All right, great.
Great, no question.
Yes?
I can come around, or I can just yell.
I'm sorry, you need to come around.
Ted Phillips, 28, Hemlock Drive. Just wondering if we've decided, or it has been decided, on pervious or impervious for the past?
It's, we decided that, or we discussed at our last meeting, that it would be pervious.
Good. Right?
It's the hope of saving trees. It was about saving trees, because if we paved and went wide, we'd have to lose trees.
Any other questions related to the historic? Okay, no?
The plan itself actually says that.
Great.
Yep. Okay. Well, I know that's what was proposed. And there was a request by the Bicycle Advisory Committee to change that, and that was discussed. But it was decided by the group that we would accept the proposal, which was the pervious. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All right. So, we had then a much shorter list of outstanding issues. And then, Denny sent some additional things for us to consider. And I have been in discussions with town council about some of the questions we had for town council, so we can go through those. So, why don't we-
What is this one we got before you go on?
This is, I asked the applicant through Ned to highlight for us what's being revised. So I'm imagining this, this ties to the plans that we're going to receive.
Got it.
We got three sets of plans late this afternoon. One was a new set of civil drawings, and so there's a two-page memo that identifies specific changes to sheet numbers.
Great, okay.
There's a second revised set of landscape drawings, with a similar two-page memorandum. And there is a-
We don't have it yet.
Revised set of architectural with a comparison.
So all those are on, digitally?
Yes.
So we got this one hard copy.
Yeah, I don't know, Lauren provided this.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
We'll make sure that doesn't, this is in Dropbox too, but everything else is in Dropbox.
Got it.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so, should we go to the, this list?
No.
No?
I would propose that we go through Denny's list first, and then we deal with this as our summary.
All right.
So if we have undecided issues with Denny's, we can put that on here, and then we have a final summary document.
All right.
That would be my proposal.
All right. So, we had Denny's list, and then we have, that was shared with the applicant, we have the applicant's response, so, let's go with, which one first? Tree preservation and protection?
This isn't printed out for us, right?
No.
It's in my email.
Sorry, is it printed out?
No, it's not.
Do you have, do you have a bill that you can call up on the screen?
I think there's two of them, and I don't understand what the-
So, so this special permit and this tree preservation, and I put my comments, I only had four comments on construction management, that I tried to add, but I couldn't tell, I was sharing them. I don't know if you got multiple copies, guys, but-
In the document itself?
Yeah.
I don't, I think we got that, right? But I don't have-
Oh, can I use these?
I don't have that printed out, so if you-
I have them. They're not supporting those together, too.
Okay.
Where should we start? Do we want to start with special permit or tree preservation?
Well, let's go to tree preservation, because the special permit, sort of the overriding document, and then it references these other documents, okay? So, the first item is the-
So the first two bullets are really about, I wanted to come up with a way- So the first two bullets are really about, I wanted to come up with a way to protect the areas that may not be in the construction area, but the broader property. So in other words, we've seen on other sites that, you know, some subcontractor might come in and say, "Oh, that's a wide-open field. We can dump a bunch of stuff there." So the developer responded that they have, and I do like the language, in the construction management plan, I think that's very good. But I was trying to come up with a way to protect the buffers and the, just the broader areas that aren't under construction from any confusion. I was thinking of a fence or signs along the field, or signs along the buffer areas, the no-touch zones. I was trying to come up with something to beef up that language. That's, that was my goal. I understand you don't want loops and loops of fences, but I also wanted some way to convey to the subcontractors.
So what about
For example, we don't want to put an ugly fence around the manor house lawn, because that becomes visible from the roadway for four years during construction, and there's not going to be any construction happening there, right?
They're going to be doing it in phasing, in phases, rather.
Yep.
And there's some parts of the site that you're not going to be touching for a while, right?
Some types of sites will never be touched.
Never. So Isaac, Denny, are you concerned about the, the, all of those, or more about the ones that are never supposed to be touched?
Well, I mean, I'm concerned about what, I mean, what the, what the neighbors can see, what the public can see. So like that wide-open field, I don't know if you could put, you know, a sign in certain places. This is not, you know, any entry areas or any places where
I think signs at appropriate locations are probably okay, you know, signs directing people away from the manor house lawn. The field is going to be completely torn up for a year, because there's two massive underground storage basins being put in, and it's all going to be put back and leveled and replanted.
Is that in phase one?
It's in, early phase, right, because that's when the drainage system has to be installed for the, for the entire project. So that's going to look, that's, you're going to see that for a year plus. It's going to be an, oh my God, what's happening thing. You're also going to be, have some, oh my God, what's happening things when you build all of the areas around the Walcott cluster. There would be large swaths of trees that are going to be completely clear-cut, because those are in the building zone. I think signage that keeps people out of the conservation restriction is appropriate. And we can, you know, maybe add some language about signage, but to think about fencing 47 acres of areas that's already no touch and no disturb and whatnot is difficult.
That's why I said signage or fencing.
I think signage, though, to protect areas that are not part of that phase, you know?
Fencing that borders a construction area and a protected area, certainly, that's appropriate.
I just make a, make a comment.
Yeah.
We can put up all the signs we want. People are still going to do whatever they want to do up there. So a certain level of this comes down to enforcement and behavior by the developer and, and his supervisor, and so we can certainly put in some signs, or request that they put in some signs, but, you know, alluding to best management practices would require them to follow the special permit, and I don't know how much stronger we can make, we can do whatever we want, unless there's enforcement.
Right.
And that's why the next bullet is fines, if they were to do it in places where they weren't supposed to.
Well, one of the things is that the enforcement of the construction management plan and the tree preservation plan are things that we've had issues and concerns regarding, and I do have some feedback from John Flynn in terms of responsibility on that. One of the things we, we could ask is, and not necessarily in the special permit, but just ask through staff, is a report from the building commissioner through the planner about what they're, what they're doing to enforce those plans, to enforce the tree preserv-, tree protection and preservation, preservation and protection plan, and the construction management plan, to provide us with a report. That, and in that report, I mean, we could ask him to keep a log, that I went to the site on these dates, and, and this is what I observed, and I spoke to the site manager. I mean, that is really us conveying to our enforcement officer that we want to make, we want to see it. It's not necessarily a condition we have to put in here, but it's something that we have to convey to staff.
To ask them to keep a log?
Well, just to ask them to keep us a price of their enforcement activities relative to those plants.
We are, the arborist is required to provide
Semi-annually.
Reports to the building commissioner relative to tree preservation and protection.
Semi-annually, right? So a lot can happen in half a year, right? So, I mean, my feeling is that
So how do we convey this? Through Mike Dennehy?
We could do it through Lauren and Bill, but ultimately, you know, since they all work under the town administrator?
Yeah.
I think so. Because one of the things that, that Joe, the PROND Act, the building commissioner asked is if we could make a condition to require the applicant to pay for third-party enforcement, and John Flynn has advised that, no, that we cannot do that. That if we, thinking about what happened on 333 Brush Hill Road, that that was a separate case, because it was part of a settlement agreement.
Right.
And so here, we have to convey to staff, you know, what the board would like to see in terms of making sure the enforcement is meeting the requirements of these documents.
I totally agree with that.
Okay. Because I do think, as you said, Brian, I agree, that it's the enforcement. There's a lot in these documents already, and it, they really do need to be enforced.
So do we, do we want to propose any signs? You had meant, so
I think you could do signs, sure.
Signs or fencing in the
Additional signs.
In the no-touch areas, sign, signs and/or fencing, one or the other, or both, whatever. But those, those no disturbance zones.
So do you want the applicant to propose language in the, in the plan to address that, Denny?
Can, can you?
We can do that.
Okay.
I, I did, I did want to say, I really like the language in the construction management plan. Thank you for pointing that out to me, Jack. And, and so then, I, I wanted to talk about fines with the board, if, if, if what was agreed to is violated at any point.
So are you down to
Third bullet. Oh, it's actually the fourth bullet, because their response is the third bullet. Did, did we get a chance to ask John Flynn?
I think they missed that one.
A lot.
I'm sorry. Did, Lauren, did you happen to talk to him about that one?
I'm sorry, about which one?
I did.
You did, Bill? Okay, great.
No.
We can't do that.
We can't do that.
There is enforcement by, there is enforcement by, by, there's enforcement by Joe, Joe Prondak.
Oh, you asked.
I did.
Number eight.
Number eight.
Oh, thank you.
Board has no statutory authority to do this.
There is a provision that requires a $300 per caliper inch penalty assessed against the contractor who violates.
Right.
Right.
That would be an enforcement, that's a, that is, and it's likely to be the contractor who would violate. There's a blank right now as to where that amount gets paid. I think it's appropriate.
Stack is standing up a fund, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I just need
We were waiting to hear back from us. That was a question at the last meeting. We were going to find out from
What it's called.
Yeah, could, could Shade Tree, it was a question to John Flynn, actually. Could Shade Tree accept money?
Well, now, since we know we can't impose the money
But what are you saying, the 300 caliber?
Whoa, 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 we're not imposing it as
The 300 caliber?
I'm sorry, on the other one.
They're off.
I'm sorry.
On the caliber, we're not imposing it, because we're, it's a condition of the construction management plan that's imposed against the contractor.
Right.
So it's not a part of the special permit requirement. It's a, it's within the CMP that we're approving.
Right, 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 it is, right.
So we're not imposing that one.
And it's, but it's the appropriate vehicle, because it's, it is a condition contained in the, in the construction management, the tree preservation plan. I suppose we can say payable to the town of Milton.
I'd rather have it payable to Stack.
I would too. I thought the question was, what was their fund going to be called, because they were in the process of standing it up.
I thought it was the name of the fund that we were looking for, right?
They were in the process of formalizing that, so we just need to get in touch with them and figure out what that's called.
Okay.
But that was in which document?
It's in the tree preservation plan on page, bottom of page four.
Okay, so we, we just still need to be able to plug in the name of the fund on that one, okay? That's separate from what this was, bullet point was.
Who's assessing that there is a penalty?
Developer.
Developer.
The developer is doing it against his own contractor.
Correct, and then he's making a donation.
If the developer is getting the money, the developer has the ability to donate his money, this is now his money, to the Shade Tree
Correct.
Fund.
Yep.
Well, the, the, the plan will designate where those funds get paid. If there's an assessment, those funds will be paid to this fund. Probably withheld by the owner from a payment requisition to the contractor.
I'll give you that name.
Great.
Okay, Denny?
So then, the next bullet is, I was asking for language. I wanted some language that was stronger, that said there will be tree protection, fencing and markings along tree drip lines, along all possible root lines of trees. In, on page four of the tree preservation plan, it says, wherever possible, I just felt like you saw some of the pictures I brought in last time, where you see this, you see fencing that goes right up against the tree trunks, but we wanted it around the drip line, and if you say wherever possible, then that, that could, I mean, it just feels loose to me. So I wanted to tighten that up.
Which paragraph under section four?
Second bullet on
Second bullet? In today's document?
Yes, from one dated 14.
It's just, it just, it says wherever, wherever possible, and I wanted it to be
I'm sorry, can you tell me again where?
Yeah, so it says, the second bullet, page four, the first sentence.
I got, I have it now, thank you.
Okay.
Would, would wherever installation of fencing is possible work? Meaning?
I think in some places, it's such a grove that it would be
What the swing is, arguably, well, it was impossible.
Yeah, no, I understand, it's a good point.
So would that clarify it?
I think so, so could you say it again?
Wherever installation of fence is possible.
Wherever.
May I?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Denny, for your clarification. Let's, let's start with that bullet, and the first two sentences is read together. The requirement, the required temporary fencing shall be installed wherever possible at the drip line, parentheses, out of perimeter of branches of trees and groups of trees. Certain trees may not be able to be protected around the entire drip edge due to required construction activities, but every effort shall be taken to fence these trees to the greatest degree possible. So I would suggest, if you read both of those together, that Denny's suggestion that taking, that, that we could, Denny's question in the first sentence is, take the words wherever possible out, and have it read, the requirement, required temporary fencing shall be installed at the drip line.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And we have a carve-out for those, for an instance where it may not be absolutely possible.
That's good.
And I like the following sentence. If trees which cannot be fenced at drip edge may be subject to vehicle movement above the roof systems, those areas will be protected to the maximum reasonable extent from soil compaction by a double layer of plywood and other suitable protective matting. I wanted the neighborhood to know. That was good. Thank you. I think that's a good solution. Let's see. Okay, so they do, so the next sentence, I have, a Northland representative will be on site during all construction activities, ensuring that the tree management is adhered to by contractors and subcontractors. The developer responded that they have that in the construction management plan. So my question is, can we also have it in the tree preservation plan? Just have the same exact language, and is that okay? So we want this to just be a mirror. Thank you.
Do we agree that it's not there? For all I know, there is a reference to it.
Oh, I know. I can only imagine.
Okay.
And then, the next bullet on the second page, all representatives responsible for oversight of the conditions of the construction management plan, tree preservation plan and special permit will sign acknowledgement of the conditions outlined in these documents. That was what you, I wanted it in all three.
Yep.
So you've agreed to that, so we can get that in all the documents? It can be in your own words that you
It'll have to be in this, yeah, it'll have to be in that.
It's one of the same language in all three, and I wanted everybody to sign off.
It won't be in the special permit.
No?
We can require in the CMP that they sign the special permit, acknowledge it, but I don't think we can make it a condition of the special permit.
Okay.
So it can be a condition of the CMP, and it can be a condition of the TMP, but it can't be a condition. Bill, you have that?
Thank you.
Okay, so, so the developer got back to me. I requested the building, planning and engineering department and the neighborhood association will be provided with a 24/7 contact for safety, insurance and other reasons unaccompanied access to site during construction is prohibited, so that's fine. So I asked for an independent arborist to provide quarterly or monthly reports. The developer prefers semi-annual, so that's, that's every six months.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I'll leave it up to the rest of the board. I, I thought quarterly would be good, especially when you're really in deep construction.
That come from?
Well, so I only, my only comment on that, I think, would be, this is sort of delving into enforcement again, because tree health, I think, is probably better measured over a six-month period, I would guess, whereas what I think you're asking for really is more, is the rule of a road being followed, and that. So
So that's more in construction management?
I think it's more in the fact that we need to be demanding from our, we should be demanding a quarterly report from our, from our inspection, as opposed to demanding it from an arborist, and that's something that we should do through staff, I think. So that, hopefully that covers that.
That goes to Cheryl's request that a log
The arborist really should be talking about health, not whether the rules are being followed. Yeah, makes sense.
Okay, as long as it gets done by one.
Yep, I agree, it has to get done by somebody.
Okay. Okay, so the next question was, I said, Northland onsite representative will ensure that the trees and tree roots on the entire site will be protected, and they They did that.
Yep.
Okay. Is that, okay, so that would be mirrored, because I got that mirrored in the, okay. For significant trees, we agreed to that 300 per caliper. The diminishing bond The diminishing bond, okay, so John Flynn got back to us on the diminishing bond.
Right.
Do you want to read that to the public?
Right, okay, so, so.
So I had asked for a diminishing bond for the rest of the trees that are not deemed significant trees. And we heard back from town council. That we don't have the statutory authorities to require that bond.
Mike, as we were reading that comment, our question is, what does the bond apply to? I mean, does it apply to trees that exist today? A diminishing bond for what? I don't know how we would, what, how you could apply it, how it could be enforced, how it could ever be. Right?
So it would be if we have all these public hearings, we agree on which trees are coming and going, we understand that the ones that are coming and going, and then there were an additional 50 trees taken down.
Then it would be a violation of the tree preservation plan, and there would be $300 per inch.
For all the trees?
For every tree that would be taken down, that was wrongfully taken down, it would be a.
Oh, okay, because the way it was written, it sounded like it was just for the significant trees.
If they're. I don't know, I, it's, I think John's right. I think, how do you, how do you, I understand the diminishing bond that was put in place for Hillside, that dealt with new trees that were planted and wanted to assure that they would survive. So there's a diminishing bond, that the bond goes away as you establish the viability of those trees. And this is a completely different thing, and I don't, I don't know how you would put a bond on the rest of the property relative to what might happen with trees.
This sort of starts to ring like what we dealt with at.
333?
Beechwood.
Oh, Beechwood.
Not bringing that up. No, Beechwood, where the tree died.
Yeah.
And we had to determine whether or not the developer killed it.
Years later.
Years later. And maybe, right? So ultimately, they decided to plant a new tree. Or we, but, but I think it was sort of, how do you, how do you figure out what killed the tree? So with the new stock, it's one thing.
But like on 333, we knew they killed the trees.
Yeah, well, exactly.
And then we were stuck, we had no way to.
But we do, if they killed the trees, we have the $300 here.
Yeah, that, this is specific to significant.
So, so you're talking, what the dwindling bond was supposed to handle was death after stabilization.
Right, for the new trees, yeah. That's true.
So I think what you're trying to avoid is 333.
I'm trying to avoid.
I think our answer is, there's not much we can do about that if we don't have an enforcement arm.
But we have the $300 penalty, $300 per caliber.
So maybe on that $300 penalty, we take out the word "significant trees," and it's all trees.
How do we measure that?
Unless we, unless we define significant, is it probably a better way to do it?
Well, I'm just wondering, because we don't have every tree on the lot on our plans.
Lauren?
I just have a question to backtrack when you're done on this topic about, this fell in the blank about the account. My question, are you looking for a new account to be created, or just the name of the existing account?
The name of the existing.
It's the cooperative tree planting account.
Thank you.
Yes. See, it was in there the whole time. You just needed to get.
Free planting.
What would you be trying to do by further defining?
I mean, the significant trees are the ones that we have on our plan, right?
Right. There's a lot of trees, though, that you'd never know. A lot of trees.
Well, a lot of them are in the no disturbance zone.
If they kill something in the non-disturbance zone, it's going to be quite obvious that they, they're going to have to kill a lot of them. They're not going to be able, they're not going to selectively go in there and maliciously cut down trees, I don't think. So I think the penalty would apply.
Yeah, I mean, so we either take the word "significant" out, or we define the word "significant." We have to do one or the other. I think, I'm wondering.
Well, are you, so I guess my question for you would be, are we talking about trees in the disturbance area that are identified on the plans as trees to be kept?
Those are some of them, but I mean, there's those Beechwood trees that we've all agreed that.
Barrier in the woods?
No, those are on the plan as to be preserved.
Yep.
The ones that are individually highlighted. I would say the ones that are individually called out.
And anything in the no disturbance.
And then everything in the, yeah. Because they're on the plans already.
And then you've got the Google map, which is referenced in there, in your comments.
Okay, so.
So we could define significant as being.
But I have, trees on the plan, are those actually where they're actually located? And every, those are, so that's our inventory of the trees that are to be protected.
We actually have an inventory, unlike what happened with the.
Okay, so we have that. Okay, so everything within the, the development area is identified, so it's all significant.
Correct. And anything in the no-touch area should be no-touch.
You know, unless there's.
Should we apply the fee for the stuff in the no-touch, that we're going to fix themselves?
Yeah, I just don't want to get into a situation where a tree falls down in the forest and they're responsible for it.
Jack?
In the spirit of Danny's question, could, could I ask for the opportunity to draft language that we could look at and determine whether or not it.
Sounds great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Love that answer.
Is it easier? I think we've all circled around what the spirit of the language is, so that's good. You're not looking to obviously protect every single tree in the no-touch area if a snow event knocks down a tree.
I'm just, if 50 trees.
We know what your intention is. We know what your intention is. Okay.
Okay, so.
Can I just point something out, Denny? When I spoke, on the bond issue, when I spoke to town council, the rules and regulations of the planning board has a section 5.11.1s on bonds or surety. And it ties it to improvements in section seven. And if you go to section seven, it has basically the roadways and utilities that you're allowed to require the bond on. So I just wanted to give a little bit more background. And so I said, he said, "It's not within our authority." The reason we can do it on roadways is because it is within the authority. That's in the rules and regs, okay? So I just wanted to be clear about that.
Okay. So, so I think I got my answer to the next question, was, I wanted an inventory. So we have an inventory in our plans of where all the trees are that are planned to be kept.
Right.
Okay. And then, do we have the Google Earth tree inventory visual yet?
We don't have it yet, no.
But there's a date in here, though.
Yeah, it says April 22nd, oh, 18, is that last year?
Wasn't that the one we all looked at?
Madam Chair, yes, the, if you go to Google Maps, the most recent aerial photography is dated, and there is, there's a scroll on there that you can go back in time to the 40s or 50s. And, but at any rate, you can get the whole site and what it looks like in April of last year. And so we figured that that would be our baseline, because nothing's happened, and that we earmarked that, and that's in that record. We can print it, but we can also go into Google Maps and always scroll back to the time bar to pick up that image.
Could I, could I see that? Is it Google Earth? Is it on your, I don't.
Is it the one we were looking at last time? I'll open it while you keep going.
Okay.
She probably printed it.
Yeah, yeah, we want that probably. Oh, okay, so, and then the long-term maintenance for the trees, well, I haven't seen the homeowners' association agreement yet. Are we still waiting for that from John Flynn? You gave it to.
Gave it to John Flynn.
And we haven't got it back yet. Is that right? Okay. So.
What John mentioned to me today, what he has typically done, is review with the applicant's council, and then, once they've gone back and forth, then we'll get it, we'll get it. That's typically the way it's been done. He asked me if that's the way we'd like to see it done, and I didn't see any reason to do it differently, but if you do, we can ask him.
So, so the long-term maintenance plan will shift over to the homeowners' association. I just wanted that noted in the agreement.
Says that in the homeowners' agreement. Yeah, I guess I'm, I don't know what the long-term maintenance agreement is.
Oh, for the trees. The trees, so, because you're going to be, you're going to have the trees to a certain place, you've planted a ton of trees, and they'll be in a certain stage. So at that point, you'll hand over the baton to them.
Right.
With directions and so forth. So it had been discussed at prior meetings, so I just wanted to make sure that it got into the homeowners' agreement, which I haven't seen yet. That's all.
Okay. Well, the HOA docs in draft form, the version that John has, is in your binder, dated back to last fall, so you can find it in there. There is no long-term landscape tree or other maintenance plan in there. If you're asking us to create one, okay, I'd have to create it, but I don't have one, you know, in the documents. In fact, I don't think I've ever created one, so I have to figure out how to do that.
Well, there is a, there is a, separately, 60% of the property is subject to conservation restriction that is being granted to the Conservation Commission. And that defines rules and obligations associated with how the 60% of the property will be maintained. And that's also, that's also a document that was submitted in draft. It's subject to review by the Secretary of Environmental Affairs, as well as town council. But it's very similar to the draft that was approved for the Conservation Commission, conservation restriction granted to the Conservation Commission for the Highland Street Cluster that was done for, by the Burks.
So that's something that we don't oversee, that's something that CONCOM oversees. Okay, so I won't even.
But it's still owned by.
It's owned by, owned by the commission, by the association. Association has obligations to maintain, to report to the Conservation Commission, the whole litany of requirements in the restriction that are, it's part of the deed of restriction that goes to the Conservation Commission.
So, I'm just checking, this is out of my jurisdiction? I'm asking if it is out of my jurisdiction. So if, if in the no-touch zones that are overseen by CONCOM, if the trees were to die out, would the homeowners' association be the ones to replenish it, or would that fall under the CONCOM?
It would be the homeowners' association, under the direction of the CONCOM.
Okay. But not the planning board?
Correct.
Okay. So Cheryl, did you get the specifications we wanted on the landscape plans? I guess you're going to be checking that.
Yeah, because we haven't seen the landscape plans yet, so when we get them.
These bullets came from that meeting. We wanted to have the actual specific placement of new trees, heights and calipers of trees. And the Shade Tree Advisory was asking for genus and species.
Right.
They gave us that, didn't they?
They gave us that, but we asked for that to be on the drawings, too, because, again, the more that's on the drawings, the more likely it'll get done properly.
All right. So then the last issue was the discussion we left off on with the question of shade tree number.
Okay, so again, this is, you can see a lengthy, I tried to provide a lengthy explanation to John for him to review.
What number is it?
This is number nine on the tree. So he, because the bylaw references the rules and regs relative to streets, and street trees are part of the requirement of streets, that that portion of the rules and regs does apply. And he felt that, or his opinion was that we could require the total number of shade trees that would be required by the rules and regs, but that they, they could, it would be acceptable to ask them to plant some elsewhere on the property, but it would not be acceptable to ask them to plant them someplace else in town. Okay, so we've talked about last meeting, that if there was a quantity, that we could suggest filling in some of the gaps that the Shade Tree Advisory Committee had, or if they lost some trees that they weren't intending to lose, that they could fill those in there so that the trees would remain, those additional trees would.
One of the things we've, one of the things we've actually done, and it just occurred to me, that we haven't highlighted in particular, but there are three specific locations where we are infilling pretty significantly with trees. And that's where the tennis court is, this tennis court's coming out. It's where the little cottage and garage are above the tennis court, above of the.
Is this near building 31, 31?
Yes, to the left of, between the roadway, actually, it's between the roadway and the , and the property line, Smith's. So below this, that area, there's a, there's a, there's a tennis court that's going to be taken out and replanted. There's a, there's a house, an old cottage and a garage that's going to be taken out and replanted. And then the, all the area behind where the entry to, where we close off the existing middle roadway, and the new, the new wall that gets installed, there's a whole set of trees that have to be infilled there. So it's, there's not just the street trees that are being proposed, well, we called out the numbers, but there's also a significant number of additional trees that are being proposed in those areas. And I think they're probably logical relative to the overall site plan, that that would be sort of where you would do it.
Do you have a quantity of what you're filling in in those areas?
Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six. Looks like, just on the quick count on the plan, is 20 fairly significant, and then lots of other different heights, so that it's not all done at one height.
Any other thoughts about that, Denny?
Those are good. I think that's good. I still think we were 20, 25 short when you, when you do the math, and you give a concession. So if you have.
So can we come back to that point on this one?
Because it's on our list? Okay. All right, we'll come back to that. Good idea. And then.
It for shade trees.
Okay.
For tree, I'm sorry, tree preservation.
Right, so next, is this the special permit comment, right?
No.
Denny's?
Yes, yeah.
I want to make one very minor comment on the construction management plan. I labeled both the tree preservation plan and the construction management plan Exhibit C.
Okay.
The CMP should be D. Construction manager should be D.
D on construction management, okay. All right, so we are on, Denny's notes, suggested conditions for the special permit.
So, in relation to architecture, I proposed, this might be on here, that the A units that are front or exterior facing the road have full-size windows.
All right, so can we come, put, we're going to do the same thing and put that on this list, right? It's already on this list.
So poor Meredith has to wait till 10:30 again?
Uh, sorry.
Sorry, Meredith. Okay.
Is it just one thing we talked about? Well, why wait?
Well, we were just, we're trying to do the things that weren't on this.
No, I get it, just if somebody was waiting, I don't know.
Okay.
That's up to you, I don't.
All right, is that the only item that?
I think that's the only architecture. I think, I, I, actually, the first.
All right, so if that's the only item that, that she's concerned with, that's fine, we can take it now.
Yeah, the first two, I think, are the ones.
All right, so.
Because I just said, I proposed, I was trying to find some, you were like, what do you want? If you don't want this, what do you want? So.
If I didn't have to be ill-tempered, I feel bad.
I know, I know. Okay, so.
All right, so.
Do you want to hear from Meredith?
Okay, so, Meredith, did you want to speak to the topic of the window, the small windows on the type As?
Thank you. Meredith Hall, 41 Russell Street. I just wanted to ask this board, I know there's been discussion with this, but before you make a decision on the A unit design, I just would ask that the planning board go back and look at the design standards again that are in the bylaw. I would ask that you actually look up images of buildings using international-style architecture. This will be. This will be very helpful in looking this up. And ask if this look is appropriate, if it is, if it is compatible and complementary to a historic setting.
Meredith, can I just, one thing, before you do that?
Yes.
I think that, I don't remember if it was me or someone else who thought at the end of the meeting that maybe there was a misunderstanding about what was shown on the drawings. They're not strip windows. There's a window with architectural wood trim and detail around the windows. So there's an individual window within a wood treatment, if you could call that elevation up. I just want to make sure...
You know what, that would be great, actually, just so people could see it too.
That, because I didn't read it as strip window at all, and so when, maybe it was Bill that pointed it out to me afterwards that, it was you. Thank you.
So that is not a continuous...
No, no. And that's why, if you don't mind, let's just look at it, because if it's a misunderstanding, then...
Correct.
That is if there's only two small windows and not an entire row of windows. Okay.
You would be, you would be correct to say that that would be out of place to have a strip window all around there.
And that is the way the Historical Commission was interpreting it?
See, there are only two windows in there. Rest of that's wood detail.
Okay, then that's fantastic, and that makes a significant amount of difference. It's still not a full-size window, which would be more classic in, in design, but it's much far, that's far better.
Especially these, because it's the bathrooms. It would be very difficult to have full-size windows and a functional vanity, et cetera, and mirrors, and the typical way you would use a bathroom, right?
Well, I will say throughout the entire town of Milton, there are bathrooms and bedrooms, and you don't see... You see that very rarely used in bathrooms and bedrooms, but that is far better than, than an entire row of windows, so...
It's board and batten, and the window is stuck in the middle of those.
Board and batten, right.
There's another, you can actually see it in the plan itself, if you go inside the building.
So in along the, on the front elevation, that's the same detail? Is that the...? Okay.
The plan would show you the actual window locations, I think that's what you're getting at, Bill? Yeah, so those windows that I said were...
See, this is the front here, so it's, what is the materi, what is the material that you're proposing?
Here, there's the front of that. See the windows up here?
It shows white as the windows.
It's already board and batten signing.
Are you looking at the A one, though?
This is A.
Yeah.
Type A.
Well, this is, this is showing a window there, though. It's not showing the two windows. It's showing windows right here and here, and one right there. It's not showing one over here. Jim?
Shower.
Jim, we gotta get Jim to get that drawing updated correctly.
That's great. Well, that is very helpful. That's great information, so that's, then...
Are we good?
Then, yeah, then I would, yeah, I think then my comments, I mean, it's, still would like to see a full window, but, you know, that's up to the planning board to decide, so, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Meredith.
Thank you, Meredith.
Anybody else? Okay.
Okay, so...
Anybody else on anything else we've been discussing?
No.
In case you want to leave? All right, no. All right, so...
Onward. So, so the next item I had, I, I had a tree, and I took this actually from a meeting that, that we had a couple of weeks ago. I had thought you had said no trees would be removed along the pathway, along the Canton Avenue walking path. So that's, I just wanted to add that condition to the permit because it had been said at, at the meetings, so...
I think they thought that there...
But I guess over by the Kevin Walker, there would be some.
There would need to be some over there, I thought.
There's gonna be some tree removal between the middle, the existing middle driveway and the Walker Drives. Because those trees, that path's gonna work its way through there. Not gonna be any significant trees taken, but they're gonna be straplings and other invasives taken out.
So...
The, 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 on the left side of the middle driveway going along the, the meadow and the, and the the manor house lawn, the plan shows, Jack wants to double-check it, but it shows that the, the walking path has moved outside of the tree line.
So they'd be even less affected. But you have some language you suggested.
Yeah.
That they suggested. Denny, what do you think of that language?
So the language says, "No, no tree greater than six-inch DBH", so that's at four and a half feet high, you do a circumference, so that's six inches. So that's a big tree. "No trees greater than six-inch DBH shall be removed without the review and approval of the building commissioner and town planner, and shall be replaced in kinds with trees proposed by the arborist." So, my concern, not, not understanding that it was just in that one area, was that 100 trees, but with this language, a, a large amount of trees at two and a half calipers could be taken down, which is the future undergrowth and the future big trees. So that's why I wanted to tighten up that language.
So you want to change this, change it from six inches you wanted to propose?
Well, if we could come up with a rough number of how many trees you want to remove, so you would say up to 25 trees of X caliper, or what it is that you want specifically, so it's not left open.
Well, I mean, one other thing you could do is have it staked out and have the building commissioner and the town plan to review the staked out.
So, yeah, because I was gonna ask, I mean, that's a pretty dense area. I'd imagine you have to take down some trees. So are you just looking to make sure that they get planted somewhere else? Because there's gonna, I mean, as far as I remember, it's pretty dense with all the little tiny...
Sure, yeah. So what I, what I, what I, what I want to do is tighten the language so that we're not opening the door to taking out so many.
Right.
And I, I mean, I like the, I like that they're gonna replace, they're gonna replenish with like-trees that will be chosen by an arborist, but I, I don't want to leave the language wide open, so...
So I suggest we have them stake it out and have it reviewed by the building commissioner and the town planner.
But then they're gonna do like what they did at 333, and they're gonna approve it. Do you know what I mean? So I'm just trying to get, like, I'm trying to find out what they want, get it in an agreement, and move on.
We need to, we need to remove trees that are within the pathway that's four and a half feet wide. And it's, and there's gonna be gravel surface put down in its place. I don't know how many trees are within that.
Is there a nat, natural walkway there now, or is it...
There's a fairly natural pathway.
Oh, it's not like you have to clear a strip?
They're gonna meander.
No, and it meanders, and it works its way through and around. It's fairly obvious when you walk out there, but there are, you know, there are saplings and things that have popped in. It may or may not grow to be large trees in the future, or it might just get sloughed out from what's already there. But I think...
So I think maybe, Denny, to, if you, to address what you'd like, you could suggest that instead of saying six inches, that you do something less than six inches. And then it's, it's accomplishing having it be reviewed.
You could limit the number of trees, or the three and a half caliper or something.
Only problem is, it's got a, it can't take like really odd turns, you know?
We do have to fit the walking path in.
Oh, sure. No, I know.
And that was a specific...
And how, how, how much of the path? Are we talking 20 feet, 50 feet of path?
I don't know.
I do. Who's got a laser printer? So as we go in this direction, it's wide, wide open. It's very, there's a walking path that, that many of us have walked in. You get to somewhere in here, and then it climbs up a slight grade and then drops down to the driveway. There's, there's a section in there that I would say there are four to six trees that have to come down to get the pathway in. If we go to the left, and Bill, I'd have to have you slide that over somewhere, there's a section, when you leave the field...
There's the middle driveway right there.
That's the middle driveway. Excuse me, you gotta keep going to the left. I'm sorry, there's another drawing. You're not gonna... This is gonna torture us because this thing's in qua... Where are we?
Okay, grab the wrong one. The other one.
Yep, there it is. So there's a, there's a wooded area between the, oop, the edge of the, of the Casey Farm Field, the field off of the center driveway which ends somewhere in here. There's a stone wall, it's probably what that is. There's an aerial electric line somewhere in there. And then you break into the manor house lawn, which is probably this tree line right in here. So there's somewhere in here, you drop down, the grade drops down, and you can stay down low, you know, in the wood line, but the Historical Commission doesn't want that. But there's a small section in here where you have to weave yourself away, and, and, you know, it's not a lot, but there's something.
You want to say up to 30 trees, and then you would come back or something? You want to come up with a number that you would feel comfortable with? Say up to 30 trees, and if not, come back to us?
I'll go walk it and count.
That would be awesome. Thank you. That's great. Thank you very much.
I can count to 10.
It makes a difference. Thank you. And then as far as signage goes, it's just, there are only the two capstones where there's gonna be the signage?
That's, that's...
And Historic Commission has signed off on that?
I don't know that they've...
That's not 100% true. There's a stop sign.
Well, there's, there's, there's traffic signs, but...
There's a traffic stop sign in the site where the loop road bends to the right and circles back around. There's a stop sign there.
Okay.
That, and then...
There's a, there's a stop sign as you come down to the, to the site driveway. There's a sign that warns you that bicycles are coming from both directions. And then there's some other traffic signs within the, for the roadways. But the only signage that says Walcott Woods are the two capstones.
And I, I'm guessing that the Historic Commission is okay with that, or, or it's okay if you haven't run it by them?
I, I don't know whether they've seen that or not.
I mean, you're gonna have police or sales signs out there, too.
And they will be during...
Okay. Okay.
During construction.
Okay, okay. All right.
But at the end of the day, all that exists of woodmire is the two signs on the capstones.
Right. Okay. And then I, I took some language from the Historic Commission, "But the stone-faced manufactured interlocking structural block wall at the intermittent stream crossings only where the public does not see them. Other stone or rock walls throughout the project should be constructed. A field stone or boulders, mortared or dry stacked of stone onsite or from offsite sources selected to match all as specified in the landscape plan, T L 30 and not versalock or similar product." Would you agree?
So, so our, the bylaw says stone-faced, and because some of these walls are retaining walls, and they require to be engineered, I would be uncomfortable requiring a certain, like, mortared or dry stacked for retaining walls that may or may not meet the purpose of the retaining, the retention of the soil that they're retaining. So I think stone-faced is what the bylaw says, and we can say field stone, stone-faced, but...
Stack stone-faced or whatever.
You know, but not to mandate the type of construction of retaining wall that, that we really don't have authority to dictate, you know?
So do we have this protective language in the special permit?
Well, we're waiting for the revised drawings to review, but my understanding is that they've agreed to the stone-faced retaining walls.
We have a choice to agree, but to agree to...
Because it's in the bylaw, it says "shall". We've talked about that before.
So it'll be on the plans, in other words.
It'll be on the plans.
It'll be on the plans, revised ones, and of course, that's one of the things they want to make sure is there.
So it will be on plans, and it's already in the special, it's already in the bylaw, so we don't necessarily need it in the special permit?
Correct. I think I did provide in the language in the, in the special permit that retaining walls shall be stone-faced.
Okay. It's in the special permit?
I think it's it.
They had a detail of the retaining walls in the set that needs to be revised, though, because otherwise the set of drawings would be inconsistent with the language. Is that the next one? You know, I asked him about a deed restriction on the historic structures. So when I talk to him about historic structures, is that it ties, it has to tie to the bylaw, and the bylaw, you know, sets up, you know, the requirements, but there's no other statutory regulatory authority given to us on historic, right? It's only what's in the bylaw.
Well, but, yeah, the, the protection you have there is if there's a, if they do something to one of those structures, then they violate the special permit, which means the certificate of occupancy can't be issued, and they have to come back and modify the special permit. That's your, that's really your enforcement mechanism there, is you'd be able to seek, seek penance at that point.
And then you also have the provision that says that any future modifications require review and approval by the planning board.
Right.
So I guess the way, one way to, if the building permit is, you know, based on the documents, and they not following the, the approved documents that are submitted for the building permit, they can stop the construction until they comply with the approved drawings.
Okay.
That's definitely within their enforcement.
All right. So then I, I asked about the DCR access sign by parking access to be installed by the developer per DCR specifications. Then the sign will be maintained by the homeowners' association. The developer agreed to that. So, so my only question is, is that in the homeowners' association agreement?
It's maintained by...
The homeowners?
Maintained in accordance with DCR. Okay, yeah, we see it, okay.
So I haven't seen the homeowners' association agreement, but do they, is it in the agreement that they know that they will be responsible for maintenance after you leave?
No, but yes. So maybe, I mean, sort of dig into the weeds a little bit. As a condominium, sequentially, if you issue a permit, the permit will go on record and run with the land before the creation of a condominium or a landowners' association, or even the recording of the conservation easement if and when that is done, and the, and the conservation takes, takes, takes it. So the, what is, what the association, the creation of the association is, is, its genesis is the recording of a master deed. A master deed is imposed as a further covenant on the land, and it is subject to all of the other covenants that run with the land, which in fact would be the special permit, the tree preservation bylaw, the construction management bylaw, and whatever other components of this. So if you're asking, is there a particular clause in the homeowners' association that calls out this or that? No. It is referenced as a condition of the master deed. I suppose it could be in the rules and regulations, but you don't want it in the rules and regulations of a condominium association, because the rules and regulations can change year to year without your purview. It has to live in what they call the master deed, which is the governing document.
One of the things that you might recall is that the Milton Woods, the Pulte project in that homeowners' association document, it does refer back to the special permit quite a bit.
Yeah.
In terms of...
When we draft those, we try to, I try, so I am a, I'm part of the drafting team for that. We try to bring forward into the master deed that which we think is important from this, for the overall long-term governance of the property, because to your point, if it's buried in a series of documents that never leave the drawer until someone does something so egregious that they get pulled out of the drawer, then they don't get, then they're not followed. So my drafting efforts, and I haven't done that yet with the homeowners' association, because I don't have a permit with you yet, in all due respect, hasn't nuanced them to that level of specificity, to be frank or direct or whatever. So what's in the book, if you will, or John is, John, Town Council is looking at, is sort of, I won't say a boilerplate, but it is the starting point of a draft of a master deed. You know, if we get an order of conditions, if we get this, this, and this, then that would, that document have to be rewritten... would, that document have to be rewritten, and whatever we thought, either individually I thought was important to you, or I felt was important to the long-term governance of the property, that should be, if you will, flagged, highlighted, like, the buildings can't change without, you can't clear-cut, or you can't do this, you can't do that. I would pull those forward. I don't know how to tell you today that they're in there when they're not, because I'm, it's sort of a if-then.
Well, I can give you the list of everything that I've, that we're talking about, and...
I probably have it, but if you want to do that, give it to me, and if you think...
Yeah, you have, because you responded to it. But this item is, here's, here's what I'm concerned about, and I'm sure you can understand, that the sign that you're creating is going to look like a Blue Hill sign, which is great, but if I'm living there in 10 years, I'm going to look at that sign, and it's dilapidated, and I'm going to go, oh, well, that's up to the Blue Hills to take care of. That's DCR's sign.
Oh, DCR, yeah.
Yeah, that's DCR's sign. So they're just not going to know that actually, they can and should be maintaining it.
Okay.
So that's, that's just the thinking behind that.
What if DCR changes its format?
Then that's up to the homeowners' association to keep up with DCR and keep it to the specifications of DCR. It becomes the home, it becomes the homeowners' association's responsibility to maintain the sign, just like they have to maintain the parking area.
Are you saying sign, or is it just the, what the sign goes on? Because I thought, doesn't the DCR put that stuff in themselves?
Well, they're doing, they're doing it to their specifications.
You're going to put the maps up and everything?
Well, we agreed to build a kiosk and a fire gate.
Right.
But we're not putting the maps up, no.
Right.
No, the DCR can stop by and put the maps up.
That's, what sign are you talking about?
I don't care as much about the maps as I care about the sign.
The structure.
The structure.
Structure of the kiosk.
What sign, like, I just want to be specific, so I know what you're talking about.
It's not a sign, it's the structure of the kiosk.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Because the sign itself is actually a DCR will put in.
Right.
Okay.
The structure of the kiosk.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. And then, and this is the same thing, it's just that I wanted that homeowners' association to be made aware that they're subject to the scenic way requirements.
Then you, you passed over the paving material. You say crushed stone, and they said paved. Did you have a reason for the crushed stone?
No, I said pervious, right, oh, did I say crushed stone?
You say pervious crushed stone, yeah.
They say paved, I thought it was crushed stone. I'm, I'm okay with either, are you? Are we okay with that?
Yeah, I just...
Paved's fine with me.
Paved's fine with me, it's just, it's easier for them to maintain, I think.
I'm okay with that. Okay.
Yeah. Well, it gets all plowed out of there, anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, as they propose, it's fine, okay?
Yep. So then, the, just, because we've had people, like, move into Hillside Street, not realize that they were on a scenic way, and then cut down trees and stuff on town property. So that's why I just wanted the, just another bullet point.
Actually, there are no trees on the town's property. The wall is partially owned by, the car garage is partially owned by the town. That's...
There's no trees out on the wall.
Trees out on the wall.
Yep. I just wanted that to be on the, I just want the, I just want the homeowners' association to be made aware of that. And then, this is just the mirror, this is the mirror of, of the agreement. So we agreed to that already, right?
Yes.
So that kind of goes along, okay? Which areas are... Okay.
Yeah, they have to come back to us, yep.
So they have to come back to us if they make any changes to anything we've agreed to?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, so this is, I just wanted, the, you know how you just had the map up of the walking path? At one point, it got longer. Remember that?
Yeah, so it went, it was originally only going to go from the Walcott driveway to the new roadway.
Okay.
And then, at the request of the town, that actually was requested to be moved to the Walker driveway. So that was a change that was added to the plan post-application.
So, so that's going to show up on the revised plan?
That's on the plan, and that's on the...
Just on the revised plan, do we need that language? Because that's new since the...
As long as it's on the plan.
As long as it's on the plan, no.
We'll have to be consistent, so you just have to check the plan.
Okay. Okay, and then I had a question about the gate. The homeowners' association will be aware that they are responsible for that maintenance, and that will be noted in the homeowners' association documents. Stormwater, okay. So, we talked about this before, actually, a number of times. And I left the meeting, and I said, wait a minute, we agreed to black posts.
Yeah, because they have to hold up the chain link.
Right. But it was, there had already been an agreement between the developer and the neighbors that there would be split rail.
So we agreed to split, yeah, we agreed to split rail anywhere you could basically see it, but along the wood edge, we said just the screening material.
Otherwise, you'd have a corral.
Otherwise, you're, yeah. That's what we...
Want to put the plan up, just to be clear about it? Bill, do you have the last six plans? I think you could probably pull one up from there.
Yeah, I want to see, I want to see it, and I want the neighbors to...
Know which one that is.
Hmm? If you have this from last week, you can do this, this is fine.
That one's good, right there.
Yeah.
Oh, that one's fine, yep.
So, there is a split rail fence that's proposed to come down along the roadway.
Okay.
Along the edge of the pathway, and up to this gate. There'll be an access gate coming from the driveway.
Okay.
And from that point, it will be a one-inch mesh, black mesh fence.
If I blow this up, you can actually see the fence.
So the idea, sorry, go ahead, Dan.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then, it'll be, there'll be black mesh installed on the fencing.
So if I'm on Canton Avenue, I can, I can see the fence closest to me, that's split rail.
This is split rail.
Assuming you can see the fence from, through the trees from Canton Avenue, because it's about 70...
If you're on the walking path, or whatever.
No, you're talking, she's talking about seeing, like, what you would see here first is the walking path, and then the split rail with the mesh on the backside, then you'll see plantings, the basin, plantings, and then the idea is that the other mesh on the black is just to blend into the landscape. It provides the safety, but the landscape is the dominant visual versus having this thing ring with the stuck, you know, kind of with the split rail part.
Is the mention of the fence up here?
Yep.
Is the fence?
If you actually drive right out to the turn to Brush Hill Road, Kevin Walker has green mesh fence attached to his split rail fence.
Yep.
And you have to look for it to see it.
Really hard.
Yeah, well, that's on the split rail, but if you have black posts in a field...
Very narrow, very small, thin...
Yeah, they're probably, yeah.
Black posts, you're not going to be visible.
So what I didn't want to do was, I didn't want to undercut an agreement that had already been made between the developer and the neighborhood. So, because I know that there were talks prior to this, so, did anyone want...
The neighbors didn't want anything.
There's been a, there was...
Well, they had agreed to split rail at one point. I know this has gone back and forth, because it's been so many months, but...
Well, remember, the original proposal...
Issue of this fencing only came up recently, because it was, it came out of the peer review for the stormwater, and there was a safety issue. And I don't think we had any discussions with neighbors about what that fence would look like since that issue came up from the peer review.
That's right. It came about, they always proposed this amount. They didn't propose anything on the upper side, and then we, then there, we sort of felt like, or at least I...
It's my fault.
...made my point that this, that the split rail, I thought, would be so dominant if you circled the whole thing with it, but others were concerned about safety, so the, that's how we ended up at this, you do both. Some of it has the split rail with the mesh, and some of it just the mesh, because the idea on the mesh is, it's supposed to blend in with the landscape. Didn't we do, that at Milton Woods allow, if they did fencing in the wooded area that was the buffer area, it had to be...
Black vinyl.
Black vinyl, right? Because those blend in.
Invisible fence.
Yeah.
I think the, the issue of the agreement with the neighbors dealt with split rail along the main roadway, all the way up along the edge of the metal.
We have the neighbors in the room, do they have anything to say to this matter?
Ted Phillips, 28 Hemlock Drive. The agreement with the neighbors, I think, that's being referenced is an email discussion Jack and I had in January after the meeting, I think it was over in the senior committee.
Yeah, the senior center, I remember that.
The discussion was around first post and rail, which had been discussed, and pictures were provided by the landscape architect at the time. You know, we pushed for the split rail, that was immediately agreed to and had been intended. The picture is provided, we're going to show the black mesh. So, and we were specifically talking about the fencing along the trail at the front of the property where you could see.
Okay.
There was some discussion about the need, at that time, to put a ring around the retention area. There was concern, again, we, I don't think we used the word corral at the time, but an excessive amount of fencing being visible. We've already got fencing up the roads, we now have it across the front. Our hope had always been to preserve the viewscape from Canton Avenue. By the time we get post and rail fencing, and curbing, and asphalt, and sidewalks, and streetlights, I think we're beginning to lose that, that desired rural aspect, anyway. So I'm going to vote for less fencing is better. So, across the back, if it's truly buried in behind there, I have no problem from a viewscape standpoint from Canton Avenue. I assume the people who live in the houses above that fencing also won't see it, so, I mean, that's not my problem. That would be more jacks from a sale point of view.
Okay, and the shrub, and the shrubbery there, do we expect that to be four feet high? Or as high as the fencing, eventually? The, the...
I don't...
That's fencing.
Eight to 10, five to six.
Okay.
Eight to 10. Eight to 10, yes.
Okay, thank you. So we're good, we're pretty good?
Yep.
We're good?
Anybody else have any comment? All right, so we're good with what's now on the plan? Okay?
And, and the developer agreed to native wildflowers, rain garden plants, landscaping for the stormwater system, so...
And that's reflected on the landscape plans?
Yep.
Okay?
And then, we had the topic of traffic mitigation.
It's on our list.
On our list, okay.
So, traffic mitigation is something...
Should we hear from the public before we start digging in, or?
Yeah, we should.
On traffic mitigation, on anything else?
Everything.
All right, does, and, does anybody here want to address the board on any aspects either outstanding in our minds, or not in your minds?
I have...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, this is really, this is a quick one.
There's, I'm sorry, just one thing, there's a couple of things we haven't discussed yet, and I know that, Hale, that you've had concerns about, so if it's those, maybe you can weigh in on that one, okay, like, on the curb, because we haven't discussed that yet, but yes, Tony?
Before the neighbors leave, on page two of the construction management plan, and that's really, I only have a couple of comments on that, but it says, on each, sign on either end of Hemlock Drive, no construction vehicle sign to be placed on either end of Hemlock Drive, and I wanted to say, the preference is on the Canton side of Hemlock Drive, so it would either be on both ends, or on Canton side. So it's page two.
Did you intend either end to be both, or one or the other, in this language, I guess?
Yeah, so, so both ends of Canton Avenue, or of Hem and Way, Hemlock?
I think we, I think we'd say it would be both. We intended that with no construction vehicles on...
Great, thank you. Yep, that covers it.
Okay.
Cheryl, I think, to what you just said to the public, I mean, we've got five items: traffic, architecture, which we've already talked about a little bit, tree preservation, which we've already talked about a little bit, grin, curbing, and street tree minimum width. I'd rather hear from the public on everything, and then have us talk about all five, rather than try to handle these one at a time. Because we're going to end up talking around inside, and, you know, going back and forth on different points.
So you want, you want the public to weigh in on all five of these items?
Yeah.
All right, so...
Because otherwise, I don't know how we deliberate and try to figure out which ones to do and which ones not to.
All right, well, there are some things, though, that I think we need to be clear, the town council has given opinion about, and it seems to me, we ought to at least provide that opinion first.
Okay, fine.
Otherwise, I think we could talk about things that aren't relevant, in a sense.
Then let's do that, and then let's hear from the public, and then let's talk.
Mine's quick.
Yes, sure, of course.
Sorry, it's just one, and I don't have my note on it, so I might have to cut, I might have to ask next time. I'm hoping that maybe Bill or Jack might remember. I, if, if everyone recalls, when we were at Milton High School during the East Milton Tap, afterwards, we had a planning board meeting, and there was a gentleman from, that lived across the street from this project, asked a question about, he had mentioned that he gets a lot of water in his, and he'd asked the engineers if there would be any additional, and I thought that Bill or somebody was going to go back and do some work to figure out...
John Witten looked at it, John Witten spoke to him.
John Thompson, town engineer.
Excellent. So what was the outcome?
The road is crowned in that area. It, there, part of it goes to him, but the majority comes the other way, comes back towards this property. So he's not getting all of the road, he gets his piece of the road in front of his house.
But he's also, I actually was driving down Canton Avenue, heavy rain, and I noticed that it's kind of sheeting across the road, but that's coming from up slope, kind of just because of the, how much rain was coming down, because it's on a hill.
Okay.
But that actually should get better.
Yeah.
Because it'll, the conditions will, they have to maintain it on their own property, which is not what's happening right now.
Should be better.
Right?
All right, thanks, I just wanted to pop, because I remember that was an outstanding.
Okay, so I do want, on the traffic mitigation, in particular, and, well, I'm just going to go through on what town council said, and then we can hear from the public, and then we can discuss. On the, on the traffic mitigation, where the traffic study finds no significant impact, and the town's peer review engineer concurs with that finding, town council finds there's no reasonable basis for us to impose any further mitigation, in fact, he said that the $27,000 offered was generous of the applicant. On the waivers, there's been, sometimes, I think it's been said either by Lauren or Bill, about this not being a subdivision, per se, but being a special permit. So there's different state law around each of those, and our rules and regs refer to subdivisions. However, our bylaw does, so the Greater States PUD bylaw, does require compliance with the rules and regs for streets per Section 5 of the bylaw. So that does apply to the trees, and it does apply to the curb. So I just, just want to get that out there before we have further discussion of, okay? So...
Thanks, Cheryl.
You're welcome. Any questions? I, also, just on mitigation, one other thing, he said that if you, Section 9 of our zoning bylaws deals with, in paragraph C, deals with special permits, and I'll just read this quickly. Where a special permit or other permit is required pursuant to the provisions of this bylaw, the applicant shall make written application and shall show to the satisfaction of the board involved. In addition to any specific requirements herein or in the law contained, that the desired relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and without substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this bylaw. The said board may make appropriate conditions and limitations necessary in its opinion to safeguard the legitimate use of the property in the neighborhood... to safeguard the legitimate use of the property in the neighborhood and in the health and safety of the public. Such conditions and limitations to be stated in writing by the board and made a part of the permit. So, he referred me to that, and then he also had referred me to the state law. And he said that that pretty much matches up with state law. This, what's in our bylaw, section nine, pretty matches up with the state, which is section forty, I mean, chapter, I should have said, chapter 40A, section nine. Okay. All right. So, anybody here like to address us on the remaining issues, or any other issues?
Well, what do you conclude from town council's assessment of those questions?
That we have a decision to make about the waivers that are being requested, because that, it's up to the board to make that decision. On the traffic mitigation, that what has been proposed is as far as we can go. That's what I understand.
Well, I won't speak to traffic mitigation, since I think you've decided that town council has given you directions on that. I will speak to the waivers, and it's essentially a request I will make to the board, to a member of this board, that if you approve those waivers, I would like the board, a board member, or the chair, to explain to the neighborhood and to the town the benefit of those waivers. That's my request.
Is there anyone else here who'd like to address us on these? All right. Seeing none.
I have a question.
Yes?
So, in the development agreement that was signed with the selectmen, there was a $25,000 commitment for a footbridge over 138. Is that supposed to be taken out of the $27,000, or is that an addition to?
That's, I think that's an additional commitment that was provided for, assuming that a footbridge is built, and was built within three years of the issuance of the special permit.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just want to say, I haven't had a chance to talk to John Flynn about this or to better understand it, but I would note that the developer could offer $27,000. There's nothing stopping the developer from offering more, considering how many waivers we have granted that have saved this developer a significant amount of money. So, I would like that to be taken into consideration. Will I do someone on that?
Oh, yeah. Well, the waivers haven't been granted yet. But I agree with you, and I really take issue with John Flynn telling us that this is a generous offer, because he hasn't been part of this deliberation, and I don't think it's his place. So, I'm actually quite offended by that.
Well, I think what he's...
I feel like it's very much positioning us, and that's not his role.
I guess, you know, that what he said was that we do not have a reasonable basis to impose that mitigation at all, is what his opinion is. So, you know, if the board chooses to do something differently, then, you know, I suppose it leaves the board, you know, at odds with town council's recommendation to us.
No, it doesn't at all. Because, as Denny pointed out, that was a voluntary contribution from the developer. We asked for more as part of a voluntary contribution. There was nothing imposed. They asked us for things. We asked them for things. We didn't say, "You have to give us anything." We asked for them to consider increasing their contribution.
I'm just relaying what his opinion is about whether we can make it a condition, okay? So, that's his opinion?
No, I agree.
And we have to make a decision, yeah?
I don't think we were suggesting that we were going to try to condition the permit on anything other than the discussion that has been taking place.
Yeah.
But I really do take issue with him telling us whether something is generous or not generous, having not been a party to this at all, to the deliberation. I think that's really out of line.
And I wanted to note that the developer is not, we're not requiring the developer to do anything at the intersection of Route 138 and Brush Hill Road, and we don't even have any proof that any of the improvements are actually going to help this neighborhood. So...
The challenge we have, though, just in a very factual way, is that they submitted a traffic memo from a traffic engineer, which provided this guidance to them around the signage. And then, we had a third-party, you know, we had our expert give an opinion that basically said, "I agree." So, that's the challenge I have as a board member, is that, you know, if it was there, if we were, if our engineer or our expert was disagreeing with theirs, I would say there's an impact. But when our own expert says they've mitigated any impact that they created, we're sort of stuck, because we don't have, that's the legitimate basis that we're hearing about, right? Because the test, the test upon which we can ask for mitigation is impact, and we're being told that the impact has been resolved.
Well, what they're saying is it's minimal, because compared to the, whatever, 30,000 cars coming up Hyde Park to get to the highway, they're contributing 55 families. So, compared to that, this is minimal. But in this neighborhood, it's a big impact.
I understand.
You have 50 cars there.
So, it's also actually worse than that, because it's saying, not only is it the 30, it's minimized by the 30,000, you also have to minimize it by what you could do by right there. So, it's not even the number of units we're talking about, it's the number of units less the by right development, right? Less that number of homes. So, you're really talking 15 or 20 homes. I'm not in any way trying to suggest that there's not going to be a traffic impact. All I'm saying is, the data that our engineers have provided us is saying they've resolved it. They've resolved their impact. So, we can do whatever we want, but if this were to be appealed, then a judge would have to look at it and say, "They didn't have any basis to ask for that money." I'm not saying we are asking for the money. I think you're both making a good point, that there's, this is a part of a, you know...
Discussion.
A discussion.
A discussion.
But I'm just trying, I think that's the basis, that's this legitimate part you're hearing, right? Is, if we have to base it upon an established impact, we have to listen to the people that are experts to tell us what that impact is and whether or not it's been resolved.
Yeah. I mean, I think it still goes back to the same point. They offered a voluntary contribution. We asked them to increase it. I don't know what the answer is yet.
It does. I'm sorry. I was trying to answer the question that Denny was asking of whether or not the signs do anything, right? We're hearing that they do, from two separate engineers, right? So, I guess the answer is yeah.
No, I think she was talking about 138, right?
That intersection, I don't see that the improvements that are going to happen there, may or may not happen, are actually going to improve that intersection. So, this developer is basically off the hook, and it's from doing what, so, prior to that 138 road development proposal discussion happening, two years ago, when the community started hearing about this construction, there were going to be fixes, there were going to be changes at the Reebok intersection, there were going to be changes to the lights, all these things were going to happen, and now...
And hopefully, they all still are going to happen, but there's...
But this developer doesn't, isn't doing any of them.
There's no impact. There's no impact justifying them to contribute to that. That's the problem.
But that's what they were offering when they first came into town. These things were going to improve this area, so they're adding 55 families or whatever, but this is going to be improved, and they're not getting those improvements. So, that's why I'm saying, you got off the hook here. My request is, you saved a lot, we've given you a lot of waivers that have saved you a lot.
Well, we haven't given any waivers.
On other items, we have, on other items.
I don't think we voted on any waivers yet.
We haven't voted on any.
No. We haven't taken any votes, so everything's still on the table.
We went through and discussed which waivers that John Thompson, the town engineer, had advised that were, in his view, acceptable, and we accepted his recommendations. When we said we have to start making some decisions on it, but we haven't voted anything yet. The, are you looking for the traffic report?
Yeah.
Okay. Because there's also, the bylaw itself, under traffic impact study, a traffic impact study with a geographic and functional scope determined by the planning board to be appropriate to the location of the project but reaching at least from the development site to the nearest signalized intersections in each direction of the street providing frontage. The planning board may require, at its discretion, for mitigation measures to be taken to address traffic impacts. Substantial unmitigated adverse traffic impacts by a great estate PUD shall not be permissible. So, we've heard that there's not substantial adverse traffic impacts, per the report and the peer review's opinion. And what we've heard is that what's been provided or being offered by the applicant was worked out in conjunction, or in conversations with the town engineer and with the peer review engineer to address the, what they thought were minor impacts. That's the way, the way I reread it today. So, it's our determination that they've, that what's been, the mitigation measurements, which is primarily the signage and the roadway markings, meet the impacts that have been identified for this.
We have a public comment?
Yes. Please come forward.
Hale Smith, 1632 Canton Avenue, president of Blue Hill Neighborhood Association. John Thompson visited the neighborhood this week and walked Canton Avenue with me and with a board member here, and...
That was me, Denny.
So, we talked about...
And Chase Berkeley. From DPW.
From DPW. And we talked, you know, we were asking them what their recommendations were. And one, one recommendation that John Thompson said was that the entrance to, the southern entrance to Canton Avenue from Route 138 is wide enough to narrow it, and that would slow up traffic entering Canton Avenue, coming from 128. And it would also create space for a sidewalk to be extended from Kevin Walker's property to the access road for Big Blue Hill. And he said that was, he thought that was a reasonable accommodation, you know, to ask the developer to do, because they'd have the equipment on site already, doing curbing, doing paving, and it would have a positive impact on the neighborhood.
And it's something that the people who live in the development could take advantage of. They could walk safely to the...
They could walk to Blue Hills, and neighbors could walk to the Blue Hills, which right now have no access, other than, you know, through the back of the property, which is not generally known by most citizens. And the other thing that John said is that it is feasible to put a sidewalk between Dollar Lane and Walcott Woods. It would be very expensive, but it is feasible. So, I just, you know, I think the board should know both those pieces of information from our town engineer.
Thank you. So, Bill did receive information from John Thompson. He shared it with me, and I, since it was one of my several calls with John Flynn today, I asked him whether we could require improvements to install sidewalks beyond the applicant's property. And he was of the opinion that's beyond our authority, because it's not an impact generated by this development.
I think that's ridiculous.
Could you read that part of the bylaw in?
You can absolutely require pedestrian connectivity.
Beyond our property for a mitigate, it's not...
In a public life, certainly.
On the property, beyond the property?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, it's, well, if you want to find the legal authority language that provides it to us, then we can send it to John Flynn.
This happens in every project. That's ludicrous.
How much does, I mean, what does that type of project cost?
Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Okay.
But if you got some money in the revolving fund, the revolving fund language evolves, it goes, the money goes into the revolving fund, the gift that they give, let's say they give 27,000, whatever, goes into the revolving fund, then the fund is there for the town engineer and the head of DPW to determine what's best.
I agree.
Which is wonderful about that.
Yeah.
Then, they can do the complete streets program, they can do anything that they want in that area, so, and they can use it to make up plans to get other grants, possibly matching grants and things like that. So, you could have a little bit of money, but you could use that to make plans to get more grants from the state or federal.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Shall we test the water on the other items and come back to this? Because we don't seem to be moving anywhere.
Yeah.
Architecture. It seems wants the understanding of what the designer...
Well, actually, before we move on, I mean, did they have anything to say? After hearing our discussion, does the applicant have any feedback or anything you want to talk about?
We have no impact.
Okay. Thank you.
Architecture, small windows, the A-style type. I think that Meredith had a misunderstanding of what the drawings represented. She seemed to be comfortable after hearing the explanation. My feeling was that the bylaw design guideline is met, because the guideline itself, design guideline on windows, let me find it. Each door, doorway, window, or window grouping shall be suitably proportioned to the building. Each unit shall have windows that open. Small windows disruptive to architectural continuity shall not be used. Garage doors shall not dominate the appearance of a unit when seen from the street and shall be of a design consistent in a level of detail to other elements of the exterior of the building. So, my feeling is that the small windows are not disruptive to the architectural continuity? That's where I am. How about others?
I have to look at the other ones to see if it's consistent and cohesive. Do we have the visuals, or should I do this on my own time?
Is this the one we're looking at on board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we looked at A. It looks like a strip, but it's just too small. But can I see the other building? Or do you want to table that to next time?
Do it now.
Do you have any of the visuals?
I mean, the clusters are designed to be distinct from one another, because they're trying to replicate the different historic structures around the property. So, I think we need to see if they're consistent within their own pod.
The type As are single families? The others are, it's connected to families?
Mm-hmm.
So, they're on their own, I mean...
So, they're different in terms of design character?
I see what you mean. They're not right next to each other.
Yeah.
If I could see the exterior facade with the, of the non-A units?
So that's a B and a C.
So you have some on the, if you scroll down, right there?
There's some small ones right there.
It's the left side though. That's not a front-facing, or is it?
No, those are sides.
Those are sides. I'm looking, I'm just looking at the front-facing. So like Unit B and Unit C, it's all big except for upper floor.
I don't know if you just said this and I just missed it, but what is, what was your opinion like from an architectural standpoint? Because I'm struggling with this one because I, I mean, I know some houses in my neighborhood have with those windows, so it's not unheard of. But I'm just curious at what, how would you, how do you look at that?
Well, I think if you look at the plan, can you go to Unit C?
You want to go to C?
Yeah. Just because you see those windows are different than the As, right? So if you go to that plan, I mean, my, my feeling is when, when looking at these, I always say, what's happening inside? Like what's an appropriate window for the interior? So if you, if you look at the plan for that, Bill, can we go to that? Yeah. It's something where you can't bring your sill down as easily without disrupting what's going on inside. Might have been... See.
Yeah.
It's the first floor.
It's kind of massive window. It's awful, yeah.
Where's the second?
It's just maybe on the curtain.
You had it. No, it's on the first floor.
It's the second.
Yeah, you want the first.
I want the first floor. I would say it was probably, was it these two? Was it those two, right? So those two are above book, it looks like this is a fireplace with some bookshelves, is that right? So those are higher windows in there where it's an all-glass wall there.
You either don't put a window or put something.
Well, then it's really a blank facade without anything, yeah.
It's better to have something.
So I saw D and C, so this is D.
Yep. D was the newer one, right?
Yep. Sheet 16 is D and a B. 16. 15 is the exterior look and then, no. 16 is B and a D.
There are small windows in all of these and while they might not be on the front, these houses, the way they're situated around the property, you're going to see the backs and sides of a lot of them anyway as they're circulated in the site because they're sort of up in the hills and...
There's your D.
Can I see the front of the D?
Up on the right, there was a small one up there, but those and those, those are the ones...
These are the C.
Oh, C, okay. Yeah, sorry, those are C, yeah.
D, C, D.
But you're right, you'll see them because of their positions.
Right there.
D with a hip roof, D with a gable. Is that what you want?
Yeah.
So all of them have it.
So all of them have it, yeah.
All of them have it on the side or the back, but every, only A has small on the front-facing. So that's what I'm saying, on, on the front-facing As that are on the street. That, that's why I was trying to get that language. What I was trying to say was in relation to architecture, I propose that A units that are front or exterior facing the road have full-size windows. That's what it's, because our bylaw calls for consistent and cohesive and it actually calls out small windows. It doesn't want small windows. So that's why I wanted to look at all four to see if there was some consistent and cohesive.
Can you go back to, can I see A, please?
Building in question.
I mean, I think this was brought up by the Historical Commission on As because of a misunderstanding. It wasn't brought up by them on the other types because those aren't set within that board and baton kind of detail.
I just want to see the front.
Yep.
Yeah, right there.
It's a waiver, right?
It is a waiver front.
It is.
Well, yeah, because it's...
It is. It says, "Small windows disruptive to architectural continuity shall not be used."
So there's nothing to say, they have, they could just take the windows out.
Right.
And then it's a blank facade. There's nothing that says you can't have a blank facade, right?
Well, I, you guys can move on.
So can you just scroll down a little bit? So this is where I guess I was going to you, Cheryl, and asking, is this something new that developments are doing anyway, or is this...
The one?
Not. I mean, you've mentioned a couple times that it's, it's because of the room use.
Well, in my view, it's, you know, you, it's important to think about how, what the use is inside because, you know, you don't want windows that are going to be problematic for the people who live there. And then one example I used was if you look at a lot of these condo developments that are all glass and then you see shades and blinds down, all different kinds, because people want some privacy. So that's where, you know, if you, I was calling out master bedrooms close to other master bedrooms because that's kind of the most private room in the house, you know? So it's one thing to have large glass at living room and dining room and family room and kitchens and stuff like that because, you know, maybe you'll wave to your neighbor from there. But, you know, so that's why I do think it's important to look at, to think about what's going on inside. Then the other thing is like some things, like, you know, where the use is, like in that living room situation where you have a bookcase and you want that small window up there just to bring a little light in from that side, the alternative is to get rid of the bookcase or to get rid of the window, right? So then if you think about the bathroom where you don't have a lot of flexibility in the layout of that bathroom, let's say the vanities need to be where they are in that plan, then you're looking at either trying to figure out how to do your bathroom, which disrupts the layout in terms of the fixture locations, or you get rid of the window altogether. So that's the way I looked at how the windows are used here and made my judgment that I felt like they were integrating, you know, with the interior in mind and not having something that looks out of place because I'd rather see the small windows than no windows at all in those facades. That's the way I look at it. Now whether, you know, every architect or every development would look at those things the same, everybody has their own view on these things, you know, but...
So I guess that's what I was asking because I, my, front of my house, I have a bathroom on the second floor, massive window, shades are always down, obviously. But I guess my house was built in the 30s, so a new house that's being built today is this what they're doing or they just shift, shaping it differently?
Well, here's the other thing, is the older homes, they were built, the windows were actually not just for daylight but for ventilation.
Right.
And now there's very few where you're getting all of your ventilation from your windows.
Right.
In new construction. It's just, people are getting their ventilation through, you know, some kind of mechanical system. If you're going to build a new house, you're most likely going to have air conditioning in it. And so you, and an exhaust fan. In the old days, they didn't even have exhaust fans in the bathrooms. The window had to take care of the exhaust. So, so in terms of, there are now, I mean, if, again, so if you look at different kinds of development condominiums, the building code allows bathrooms not to have windows any longer. It used to be the building code required them. If you don't have a window, you have to have mechanical ventilation. So, you know, there's...
Okay. So, yeah, I was just, not to be, I was seeing both sides. I guess I was just trying to see what people do these days, knowing that I'm thinking older homes. I mean, I see small windows in a lot of older homes too, so that's not unheard of.
They would put them on stairs a lot of times because you want to get daylight into a stair, but where the window fell might be odd.
Right.
And so there, a lot of older homes will have small windows at the stairs or, I mean, to balance something out on the facade.
We can just take a vote on this issue.
Well, we can see if there's a consensus.
Right, that's what I mean.
I'll go around the table, April.
I'm fine with the small windows.
Same.
I already expressed that.
I mean, I'm fine with them. I just, that's why I was asking so many questions about them to see, but it, so I'm fine with them because I don't see an alternative that would look better.
Well, I can be the minority and still go through, right? You don't need five, you only need four, or you just need a majority. So I, I think it's, it's not consistent with the language in the bylaw and it's an easy fix. I mean, I can understand if those are bathrooms, but I don't know that they are. So move on.
Okay. Everybody comfortable moving on?
Yeah.
Rich?
Yeah, that's...
Okay. All right. On our tree preservation, we already discussed that and we already talked about the date, right? 2018 because of Google.
And those images will be archived?
So that image is archived on Google, but I do think we should have something printed out.
Yeah, I agree.
There's no, Google's not going to archive for us. They decide they want to do something different.
Correct, so we should have a print.
Are you sure, print or how about a JPG or PDF?
Whatever. We need to have something in the record.
To memorialize it, yeah.
Right.
So is that something that the developer does or do we ask our staff?
I would ask for that to be some kind of electronic, so PDF, JPG, whatever, screenshots that you take and document it.
Yep.
In color.
And that's actually, I think that's exactly how it's described in the special permit.
Okay.
It's a screen grab or something like that.
Okay.
Oh, that what I wanted to make sure, would it be multiple images or can it be multiple images so we can really get in?
I think it should be, yeah. It shouldn't just be way up, right?
Thank you.
I think that was the intent.
Yes.
So overall and detail?
Yeah. Multiple close-up detail, the whole site.
All right, on the waivers, we had been down to two unless we revisit. The vertical granite curb, which is required in the bylaw, I mean, in the rules and regs. The proposal of a 12-inch wide Cape Cod berm and sloped granite a certain distance at the entrance. And I guess if we want to talk about, just throw out both at the same time, the street trees, 12 feet height and 50 foot spacing, we already talked about how there's existing trees, particularly at the upper boundary of the road and other places where they're preserving trees. And we've discussed that if, sort of length of road divided by 50 feet, there'd be 152 required.
We got to talk about these now?
We, we know and we've heard that Mr. Smith and the Blue Hills Neighborhood Association are opposed to the requested waiver on both of these. Anybody else want to express any comments about these requested waivers?
Yeah, I would. Scott Beebe, I live at 1514 Canton Avenue. And I guess my comment or my really ultimately question to the board would be very, very similar to Hale's in that I see no benefit to the town to grant these waivers. And as a neighbor, we feel very strongly, very strongly about these provisions, particularly the trees. So I, I just can't see any basis for, for waiving these, these things. So just want to be on record saying that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. No, you can finish with the...
Is there anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, Rich?
I just want to take the first one, the Cape Cod berm, because I, this is maybe a question for the staff or somebody. So I've driven around the town and, you know, I've seen other developments that go up and it seems like, like our bylaw says one thing, but that doesn't seem like what happens in developments or even in this town. So my question is, kind of, I don't know if I'm asking for an answer to it, but I feel like our bylaw needs to be changed at some point to catch up to what we actually want in the town or what we're doing because it's not what the neighborhoods look like, at least the ones I'm, unless I'm missing some neighborhoods that have all granite curbing. I see the value of granite curbing throughout the neighborhoods in, in the areas that we've talked about before. Crossings, corners, intersections, you know, where people are walking along the side of the road, you know, anywhere that quite honestly looks like common sense that you should have granite curbing throughout. But there are also some areas that quite honestly don't, in my, my opinion, does it make a lot of sense? I don't know if maybe, I mean, is this something that we're constantly giving waivers for in the town?
I wouldn't say constantly. I would say frequently.
Okay.
This was one of the items when I went over this list of waivers with the town engineer. He specifically mentioned all the ones that he felt were technical in nature and left, he did not want to give an opinion on things that he felt were aesthetic and up to the planning board to decide. This was one of the things that he specifically named as feeling that it was an aesthetic decision.
Which I think is the right call.
And I do, oh, sorry.
So I know, on that note, but I would imagine him maybe not, but he'd probably think that there are areas that you probably should, like drains. I mean, there are certain areas that you probably do need or would make sense to have granite curbing. Or no, he didn't have it.
He just didn't comment on this. This is a private property. It's on a town freeway, so...
Bill, I'm sorry, Bill had his hand, then April.
A lot of it has to do with who's doing the plowing. If we're doing the plowing and we're going to accept it as a public road, it's a requirement to put in granite curbing. Not that we have every street in town that's a public, a public street have granite curbing, but if it's been in the last 30, 40 years and we're going to accept it as a private, as a public way, we're going to put in granite curbing. If we're plowing it, we want granite curbing. If it's a private way, this board has, the planning board has usually taken on private ways, not gone with granite curbing.
Okay. And a lot of that has to do with aesthetics.
So the comment I will make, though, is that this bylaw was written for this project in consultation with these proponents. So it's not just a bylaw that we're applying to anywhere. It's something that was agreed upon. We wrote the bylaw together. It was a long, drawn-out process. So, I mean, this was always part of the bylaw.
This is not part of the bylaw in town?
It's a rules and, it's in the rules and regulations which are referred to in the bylaw. I will, on an aesthetic note on this, I confirmed with the Historical Commission today that they would prefer not to see vertical granite curb from an aesthetic point of view because they think it changes the aesthetic of the historic aspects of the landscape there. So I just want to...
But did they say they want it sloped?
I don't, I think they'd prefer to see none at all, but, yes Hale?
I think not, what I heard.
Well, Meredith said something. But I don't know if she was speaking on behalf of the commission or herself.
I think she was, yeah, I don't think she was speaking on behalf of...
Hale Smith, 1632 Canton Avenue. The argument the developer has made for a Cape Cod berm is that it's more informal and conducive to a rural landscape. We've heard at a previous meeting that they absolutely have to have curbing just about everywhere to control runoff. So it's not a question of whether there will be curbs or not, it's a question of what kind of curbs. And what the Blue Hill Neighborhood Association is suggesting is that a sloped front granite curb, which is not the same as a vertical curb, would be more aesthetic and a lot more durable for a roadway that has lots of turns and corners and areas to be damaged by plows. It's also a lot better looking.
So to be clear, it's still a waiver from the bylaw because the bylaw requires vertical curb. I just want to make...
It requires granite curbs. It does not require vertical curbs.
Not per, the section, the cross-section through it shows a vertical curb, which is at the last page of the rules and regs. Yes, Rich?
Question and comment. So, and I haven't seen this street, but, so I'm thinking, you know where Ben's is, there was a new street put in. So would you say that that probably, does that have all granite curbing up that new street?
That lane way?
Yeah. I'm sorry? I'm sorry?
Chilcaytine.
Yeah. It does?
Oh, I don't know the answer. I'm imagining it does.
I'm just trying to get a picture of the new, so, just to be clear though. I actually think that, I think I'm going to disagree with you, Bill, because I've actually heard John Thompson say that he preserve, prefer not to have granite curbs because it wrecks the plows. They'd rather fix the curbs. I'm not saying that's right or wrong. I'm just, that's what he said, is he'd rather not have to fix the plows.
When they do a.
And regs, Rich.
Like a complete redo of the roads, they put in granite curbs, like they just did Brook Road all the way down to the vineyard.
Yeah, and it looks beautiful.
And by.
So I mean, that is what they've been doing.
I'm not advocating for either side. I'm just trying to get, understand it.
So I have a question for the applicant. How many linear feet of roadway do you have and how many linear feet of granite curbing are you proposing?
I don't know the answer to that. We're proposing to go granite curb from the intersection with Canton Avenue up to a point that's just below the Walcott, not the Walcott, the Devon's house, and then granite at the two crossings of the intermittent stream. And I think granite at the intersection of where the Loop Road turns around. And I think that, I mean, I think the aesthetic is an important component. I think the maintenance is an important component. Obviously, the homeowners association will be maintaining, you know, the subdivision rules and regulations are referred to as are the authority to provide waivers. And the waivers have to be sort of consistent with how the development wants to be developed. In my mind, this is a development that sits at the southerly end of Canton Avenue. To ask, to request that granite curbing be put throughout this development would be completely inconsistent with all of the roadways in this area of town. Carberry Lane has granite from Canton Avenue to Jack Week's driveway. And then there's no berm until you get to the turnaround. Hemlock Drive has no berm. There is granite for the curve coming from Canton Avenue as you enter onto Hemlock and it transitions to nothing. Canton Avenue itself has nothing. There's no berm in front of Eustace Estate. There's no berm in front of the Bartol Estate. You go long lengths of, of Canton Avenue where there is no granite. There is granite when you get to sections where there are sidewalks and you need to protect a vertical, a sidewalk that is up against the curb by having a vertical transition. But there is no other granite elsewhere in this part of town. And it's, and to simply say that the reason you should require it is so that we don't cheapen out on what we're proposing is a completely inconsistent and inappropriate way to request that we provide it. The provision of granite and other curbing should reflect the, the, the surroundings, the aesthetics, et cetera. But because we're being accused of cheapening out and that's the reason why we should provide granite curb, that's not appropriate.
So I took a walk. I live on Canton Ave, not this end of Canton Ave, but near the high school end of Canton Ave. And I walked down to Governor Stoughton Road and through the Pulte Development and to Quissette Brook and to Home Inc. and to Indian Cliffs.
Is there a sidewalk?
And there's inconsistency throughout, every single one of them is totally different. Canton Avenue in that short stretch is totally different. There's some granite curb on one side, no curb or asphalt curb on the other side. Indian Cliffs has no curb beyond the main entrance at all, no flare. Quissette Brook, I believe, has sloped granite for the beginning and then has none. My visual aesthetic preference would be none beyond major curves and roadways because I, I think that's more in keeping with, with the aesthetic. I had major concerns about rounding of asphalt because I think that is definitely gets banged up and it looks awful. The flare up, I feel like, is, is more durable. And it's on the homeowners association, and these homeowners, I'm assuming, are going to be paying over a million dollars for each of their homes if it's similar to the Woodmere, it's, it's above a million, that they're going to want to maintain their road. So for me, it's about the aesthetic, what looks appropriate. And also, I, I agree that this, this end of Canton Avenue has the least amount of curbing and the most natural landscape. And I feel as if the granite curb is the dominant thing that you see going up. If you go and walk through Pulte, that granite curb is very dominant when you walk through what used to be a beautifully wooded area. So my concern is really on the aesthetic. It's not about whether one is more expensive than another. And, yes, Rich?
So, and behind you, is that the most current drawing?
Yes.
So along what you were just saying, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that main first, you know, entrance along the left side, that's where we call the meadow, right? That's, I guess that's my, the same feeling is, I can't, like, I feel like that looks very commercial when you put the granite curbing in. And if there's no, I don't even know, is there a sidewalk there along that left side?
Right side.
Right side.
There will be.
There will be.
On the left side?
No.
Only on the right side.
Well, so that's my question in general, like where are we, when we say curbing everywhere, are you talking about curbing only when there's sidewalks? Or are you going to throw in it in front of a meadow and there you go? That would look awful, I would imagine.
So you're going to have a sidewalk on the, on the left-hand side, right?
Left-hand, all the way around. It's on the right-hand side.
Right-hand side.
Okay.
Sidewalk will be, no, I'm.
It crosses the, it does cross over.
But on, on that lower part that you see from Canton Avenue, it's on the right-hand side.
It's on the right-hand side, okay. Oh, okay.
And it's four and a half foot planting strip between the edge of the roadway and the sidewalk which provides separation.
I guess what I was trying to get at is, I bet, like, I wonder, like, do you have one that shows the amount of granite curbing? Because it's, it's not that many streets. I'd imagine there's a lot of it that is granite.
There is on a civil drawing.
Yeah, we have a drawing of what the sidewalk looks like and what the curb looks like.
You know what I'm saying? Like, I feel like we're talking in generalities when we say the whole or the none or, what do you mean?
I think the question is.
So we don't have an option to have nothing. So we can't just do nothing.
I know, we don't.
Well, that's what I need. There's not nothing. There's definitely some.
So the developer wants to do the Cape Cod berm that flares.
Right.
Okay? Hale is.
With a little bit of granite in key locations.
With a little bit of granite in key locations.
We should pull up that.
That's what the developer wants, this. Has anybody driven to Woodmere?
I have.
You saw Woodmere? See, it's about two years old. This, and it's all beaten up.
You know, I didn't see it beaten up. Maybe I missed where it was. I have some photos too, but keep going.
But this is more gentle than this.
But this is on an entrance.
Right, that's on an entrance.
But maybe, I would have a doubt throughout the whole thing.
I, I hear what you're saying, but, but you see it's more gentle than this is harsh.
Absolutely.
This is, this has a more urban feel.
Totally agree.
This, the slope, the slope flows in.
So you're talking about in general, when, where they are putting it, maybe they should be putting.
Slope.
Oh, I get it. That makes sense.
So, so then what we're down to is the developer is saying this and Hale is saying this. And I'm agreeing with Hale in that when you go to the 55-plus neighborhoods in town, they have a lot of this. And they don't have any of this. And when you go to Woodmere, this kind is really beaten up. And it's only two years old. And it's, it's our town specs, it's our town regulations. I need to see a win. I need to see why not. And it's not about cheapening out. It's about, I need to see a public good and I just don't see one.
I guess I'll jump in. You know, if I start the conversation four years ago when we started, there was a recognition by me in concert with all of you and the entire town about the value of this property and aesthetic value of the property. And that if, if the use of the property was not going to be preserved as it exists today through some sort of conservation effort and was going to be developed, how could it be developed in a way that it fit the context of the neighborhood that it's in? And the approach that we tried to take at every single decision point was, the phrase that ran around the team was light touch. We talked about the walking path behind Canton Ave Stonewall and, and whether it could meander through the trees and whether it be paved or not paved. We, everybody, myself and others in the conversation all came back to less is more, light touch. As we started to link about the design of the road last summer and how wide it was, you know, whether it's 26 or 28 or 22, we wanted to minimize the impact that macadam surface and the drainage and so on and so forth associated with it would have on the overall property. The use of, the use that we've employed and are suggesting that is appropriate came out of, you know, two design, you know, what they call ashto design books. One is World Rural Streets and one is called Sustainable Neighborhood Road Design. The notion is, is to try not build highways, to, to, to make neighborhoods feel friendly. In this case, as, as, as one board member said earlier, and we talk about curbing, what we're talking about is both sides of the street for the entire length of the road. Some 3,000-odd feet, remember Lemero, order of magnitude 3,000 feet of road. How do we make that road disappear into the field on one side, an open meadow on another side, a wooded area on a meadow other side? Introducing a different medium, a different looking, a different color and a different shaped structure, paralleling both sides of the road for 3,000-odd feet, intercepted, interjected by a driveway and a driveway and a driveway and it gets all choppy. Your eye is going to see this, this ribbon, whether it's laid back, as has been suggested, which is a creative and, you know, not, not, not a bad idea. But whether it's laid back or even more importantly, if it's vertical, it's going to be that ribbon. So we've tried to employ from a maintenance perspective, from a defensive perspective, from an aesthetic formality perspective, the use of that type of a granite product where we think it's most appropriate. And to then employ another product where it allows that, that street to the greatest degree possible, and I'm all for you. I've built lots of roads where the road ends and the grass begins and there's nothing in between. But Massachusetts Stormwater Management won't allow us to do that anymore. Where, where the road just fades into the landscape on both sides of the street. You know, I have built miles of roadway doing this in tens of thousands of communities and sold, I don't know, you know, a billion dollars worth of real estate in 34 years. And I don't, you know, my, the, the projects are still out there. They're selling, their resales are there. You know, I go through, go through Blackrock, go through my Woodlands project, which is now 15 years old. I was there two days ago. Go through Highland Meadows in Weston where units are selling for $4.5 million. This is the design protocol as outlined in the various design books that has been adopted and for good reason and has worked. Yes, any curbing can get destroyed in one way or another by a snowplow, a moving truck, a construction vehicle and needs to be maintained and/or replaced. I don't disagree with that. Is one harder than the other? Sure, one is harder than the other. Holistically, what we proposed, we think it fits the context and the spirit. And, and it wasn't, what's in the public good and what's the public benefit to the overall, you know, 10,000 or 12,000 residents of Milton is what is good and what is good land planning, good development and good use of materials and, and application for this site. And I firmly believe that we've done it for that reason and that reason alone. And, and, you know, at the last meeting, you know, I, it was represented that it, you know, we're, we're giving Dolly tens of thousands of dollars and why in the hell should we do that? You know, it's, it's out of hand. It's inappropriate. And, and I stand by the design intent and the application that a very skilled group of, of designers in this field that I've employed have suggested that we move forward with and this before you.
So I just want to make a, a comment about our rules and regs. I've mentioned this at other meetings and I've mentioned that I think that we need to review them. And one of the reasons is, is that this roadway cross-section is not something that is viewed as a common or an appropriate way to do roadways any longer because you have 14 feet per lane of paved road that's 28 feet wide. If you saw a 28-foot wide paved road going up here with vertical granite curb, it would be a significant visual because 28 feet's wide. But not only is it a visual, it's a lot of impervious pavement. And the, there's so, there's so much interest even at the state level here of having towns look at how to do more low-impact development. Because all this, this is sending more storm water into more structures, into requiring larger structures. And so when, when I'm talking about the, we talked about, just one second. I, I know I'm focusing in this particular part on the width, but all of these things come into play because this is like a 1950s kind of roadway section.
66.
And, okay, 66. And then the other thing is that they don't take, it doesn't take into account how many vehicles the roadways are serving and whether they're private or public. Whether the, now roadways are looked at based on the services that they provide. Are they something that's a state roadway, sort of a local main street, a privates or a, just a, like a something that's internal to a particular development? And we don't have any distinction in our rules and regs. So when we talk about waivers, I just want to be sure that what we're thinking about is not just the fact that these are waivers from, and we shouldn't be granting waivers. We need to understand that these rules and regs were put in place a long time ago. And in, in some ways, they don't make sense. And it, we shouldn't think of it as a negative to grant a waiver around them, in my view. Yes, Lauren?
I would just like to quick direct to the text on the screen while we're on the topic of waivers. This text is just zoomed in to page five of 18 of the special permit draft that you have in front of you. This, the waivers that are listed, these considerations are taken from the planning board rules and regulations. They use eight or so factors that the planning board can consider when determining whether or not to grant waivers. Want to remind the board of that.
I have a thought, but Denny had a question first.
Well, I just wanted to point to this plan that we're not doing 28 feet. And I agree, I agree with you that we don't, you know, the less pavement, the better. But we've, our, our town engineer told us that we have to do curbing. So we have to do something on, on either side. So that wasn't, that's not us wanting to do that to the environment. That's us needing to do that for storm water. And I appreciate Lauren reminding us of this because, you know, it, I do, when I think of sound planning considerations, I think of long-term. And, you know, when I talk to, you know, Deborah Felton at Fuller Village who has both, you know, granite curbing and she has some asphalt curbing, she said that the granite curbing just lasts and looks so much better long-term. And, you know, I do think it's an aesthetic thing. I think this with the sloped, I, I hear what Jack's saying about the ribbon, but I, I think it does blend right in with, with the grass or a field or from a distance. I think it's high-end. And when I went to Woodmere, I was surprised at how beat up in just two years the pavement, the flared curbing was. So, and when I went to all the 55-plus neighborhoods, they weren't all granite, but they were 50% granite. So that's the other thing is that we could be thinking of where would the best place be to put granite?
Well, that's what I asked to see if we could pull up.
Yeah.
The plan that shows where the granite is proposed, but I guess we don't have that.
Yes, Rich? I'm sorry, Denny, where you done?
Yeah, so like where the curves are, where the intersections are, the entrance, you know, if we could, if we could just kind of meet somewhere in the middle, maybe that.
It is proposed at the entrance.
Here it is, roughly, so. So just my thought before, just, can I?
Sure, go ahead first.
Thanks. So I guess in, I'm not, I don't want to disagree with, with the surrounding neighbors. The only thing I, I put forth as a thought, and when you, when you talk about like public good and obviously there was, you know, good reasons on there that we can do this. And I think the things that I'm looking at is when you drive by that site now and you look down that road, you see lawn and trees. And I think my understanding of this project is in the future, when you look down that road, you largely want to see lawn and trees, right? And so my problem with curbing like that is you're, you're no longer going to see. And so my problem with curbing like that is you're no longer going to see that, you're going to see Fuller Village. So when you drive into Fuller Village, it's more institutional than, than this type of a property. This is more meadows and fields and a whole lot of trees that we're talking about saving. And so it's visually, aesthetically, a completely different site. And so we have a number of these types of estates. When you do drive by, you see trees, you see lawns. And I'm hoping that the finished project is very similar to what you see now. You see lawns and trees and, you know, when you go up there, I think, Jack might have showed us at one point how the difference between you're looking at just houses put in and now all of a sudden there, all the trees are up and everything kind of gets lost in the trees. That's what I'm visually seeing in my head when I look down this road and I'm thinking with a granite curb, no matter how you shape it, you're going to lose that. And I think, I just want to make sure the neighbors know, like, I think what I've been hearing from a lot of neighbors coming in is we just don't want to see anything different than we see now. We see trees. And I want to make sure I don't see any big institutional things. That's, that's, I mean, I'm probably not using the right architectural word, but I look at that as very commercial, very institutional.
Hale, you have a comment?
Please. So, Hale, so they have 1632 Cannon Avenue. So, yes, the neighborhood has been concerned about preserving as much of the character of the neighborhood as possible, there's no question about that. But there are 54 units going into this development, which is more than all the homes at that end of Cannon Avenue. So Woolcott Woods is going to change our neighborhood. There's no doubt about it. It is going to change our neighborhood. Someday, I'm going to need a sidewalk on that part of Cannon Avenue because it's absolutely unsafe to walk that road today. The, the quality of materials, granite is a natural material, so is a stone. It's a lot more attractive and durable than asphalt is, which is an artificial product. When you, you know, as a neighbor, I'd rather live next to a development that was built with high-quality materials, recognizing that, yes, it's different than, you know, the roads that have no curbs and no sidewalks, but boy, you know, it's going to be around here for 50 years and look good in 50 years, rather than, you know, agreeing to a quality compromise simply because, you know, the developer wants to save, save a buck. And that's what it comes down to.
All right, so one of our considerations is not whether there's an increased cost or decreased costs. We have the considerations that we have on the board that we have to weigh in on. I just want to make sure we're clear about that.
I think this one is aesthetic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I know that you wanted to point out, Ned.
I think you were asking if we could do that.
Yes, if you could point it out, yes.
So there's vertical granite that's proposed on both sides roughly to this point. It's just a little bit below the Devon's cluster.
Can I, can I interrupt you? So what caused you to bring it up the front?
Why did I ask for it?
Brian asked us to consider, take it further in.
Because you think it looks nicer?
No, as a, you know, sort of, and as a concession to the fact that we're giving them a waiver. And so from a neighborhood impact standpoint, you were bringing it in basically as far as you could see from Canton Avenue, and then once you get up to about Devon's and my, you know, that was what, that was where they proposed, I didn't say Devon's house, I said bring it up to the point at which you don't think you can see it from the road anymore. And that was where they chose to put it.
Comes up to a point where the, where the roadway transitions from 24 feet to 22 feet. It's somewhere in this area.
So just a point, though, that's a different thought. Aesthetically, you're thinking so you can see it.
Exactly, that's what I was just going to say. Your future point.
No, the neighborhood.
No, it's just fine, I like.
No, I know, I mean, it's conflicting.
I was responding to the neighborhood.
No, I get it.
Asking for an aesthetic. And so I asked them to get the aesthetic up as far as you could see. And then after that, it really becomes part of the private property. In my, that was the way I was.
I get it, yep.
And then there are two other locations are at the crossings of the intermittent stream and at the curve of that intersection.
That's where you will definitely commonly see the, at the intersections throughout town.
Is there one on the, so on the far-left bottom curve that kind of?
Along there.
Yep, is there one there?
No. There's a retaining wall that transitions to.
Ah, okay. So there's something there.
Yeah. So from a process perspective, do we have to decide this tonight or can we decide this at the next meeting?
We keep pushing it down.
Well, we have to decide everything at the next meeting.
Yeah, it's 10:30.
Time to go.
All right, I guess, I mean, my hope was that we would decide on all of these things and then spend our next week reviewing all the updated documents and then review all of the, you know, the last details of each, of each of the written documents.
Do we have anything else on our agenda next meeting?
I want, just, I'm going to give you a brief, out of courtesy overview of what the MPIC, my MPIC presentation for town meeting, because MPIC is required to give an annual update. And since you haven't heard that in a while, that's it. But that shouldn't take more than five minutes, I'd say.
Can I ask one more question about the curbing? I forget, I think April, you mentioned it, that what we're talking about is a bylaw that we created for this project. So I was not involved with this at that time. Does anybody know why that was put in like that? And was it that everybody?
What was put in?
That there should be granite curbing throughout?
It wasn't.
No, it wasn't. All it does is refer to the rules and regs.
So it wasn't flagged as an issue that should be waived.
Okay, so it is to the bylaws.
Just a reference.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
And the, as far as, we've had long discussion about waivers on other applications in my four years on this board. Polte has granite, vertical granite, they did not ask for a waiver on it. The other developments, we granted, we've granted a number of waivers. I'm thinking, I don't remember what the one off of Ford Ranch Road is called.
Wentworth Farm.
Wentworth Farm.
Polte is going to be a public road.
Okay.
It's coming back to us, therefore they needed to go granite curb.
How many houses is there?
23.
Single-family house lots.
They're, it's a cluster development.
It's a subdivision.
It's a little, it's a little different, but you know.
But our rules and regs don't seem to differentiate between private property and town owned.
They don't.
No, they don't at all.
They don't distinguish between a three-lot subdivision or a main roadway going through town.
Like 333 Brushell Road, they had granite. They had a lot of granite.
They were putting in granite, but they were supposed to come back to the board and put in the granite.
All right, well, last time I was there, there was granite, so.
All right, so.
Oh, gosh.
So I think we should at least address the trees.
Yeah, I do too.
So I'd like to speak to the waiver that was the comment that Mr. Smith made at the beginning. For this one, I'm not really worried. We can talk about number of trees and whether that's an appropriate waiver, but I really don't want the trees to be spaced 50 by 50. So whatever that spacing is. Well, I understand, but that's part of the waiver.
Again, we're granting waivers in any case.
So I, I want to be very clear that we have to grant, in my opinion, we have to grant some waiver there because this would be a really disappointing plan.
Right.
If you had a tree every 50 feet. So really, is the conversation more than how many are you putting somewhere else? Right.
Number of shade trees.
Yep.
It's the number of shade trees. It's not number of trees. It's number of shade trees. We talked about.
And within the 40% of the land, it's not being preserved.
Right, right. So there was some discussion, sorry, that, you know, STACK had, the Shade Tree Advisory Committee had made a suggestion of filling a few gaps. I think my suggestion was pick a, a number that was, you could assign to certain trees that, like evergreens, for example, where there's a cluster of three where there would otherwise be a shade tree, and get that to be accounting because it's, to Brian's point, it's the aesthetic. They're trying to, the design is based on the existing conditions where the aesthetic of the subdivision is a brand-new subdivision on a plain piece of lot and you line it up to get your shade trees. And that's not what we're, we're aiming for, what they're aiming for or what we want there. So they should, in my view, get credit for some of those trees that are otherwise not shade trees on there. So then the question becomes, is the total number, you know, comp, yeah.
Just, this might be that question because I'm getting tired, but, so if there was a number of trees that were delta and it was, I don't know, 20 trees, can, so the town has a problem with not having enough money to put trees, shade trees in streets, is there an ability to, say, put them elsewhere in town?
I think that was one of your questions to John Flynn.
Oh, was it?
Not per John Flynn Town Council.
But we can't reply right, but it could be offered.
It could be offered, yeah.
Because, I mean, the town obviously can't keep up with the amount of trees we need to put in, right? I've always heard that at the Warren Committee.
And so I think the issue is on this, and correct me, Denny, if I'm wrong, but they've proposed, ordinarily under our bylaw, it would have to be 152 trees, and they've proposed 171. But part of that includes ornamental trees.
Right.
And understory trees.
Right.
So if you take those out, it's 138. So they're.
So it's not a lot.
14 off, yeah. I mean, that's assuming you include, you include shared driveway trees and evergreen trees in the count.
How much do town trees cost? 500 bucks?
Are shared driveway trees, are those shade trees? Are those from, which list are they from?
I think there's.
Did I see street tree, they say evergreen, they say tall one.
This is understory, but I don't see.
Shared driveway trees are, like if you look here at the eyebrow up at the top.
I don't know what any of these trees mean, but here's their list, by category.
Yeah, that's, that's, okay.
Is that the number?
Yeah, so this is the number that they would do if they spaced them out 50 feet.
And how many do we have?
So we're at 171, but subtract ornamental, subtract understory, and the shared driveway.
Shared driveways are shade trees.
Okay.
Shared driveways are acting as roadway.
So there's 37 trees.
But without having to go to the full widths and all the other things. So it's actually, I don't, it's a better plan, so I don't think it should be penalized.
No, I agree. I don't.
No, by the legend on the landscape plan there.
Then we're 14 trees.
Yeah.
17 plus.
On this lot that has millions, not millions, thousands.
And Ned mentioned earlier that they are filling in trees at tennis court, at former driveway, at.
I think, did you say 14?
Right.
Okay, because I, I was up to 25 because I was not counting the shared driveway trees because I did not know they were shade trees. I thought that they were ornamental.
Can you tell by the, can you confirm by the list that they're shade trees?
Yeah, that's why I gave you that list.
Well, this, this list doesn't say.
It has by category.
See, the, the, see, what's confusing is you have this, which means ornamental, but then you have this, which I guess means shade.
Oh, perhaps.
Where are the driveway trees going? Is that the middle of the driveway?
No, like a shared driveway. Shared driveway is like up here, which, you know.
Oh, those are the two right there?
They serve like that, right? So that's.
Those two right in the.
That's, that's the two locations.
Some of these are, some of these driveway trees are ornamental.
The way, the way the plan lays out that at the edge of each driveway, there's a shade tree. And then between shade trees, there are evergreens and/or ornamentals. So there are, there are shade trees along, next to every driveway entry.
So, I mean, we're talking, you give them half credit for the shared driveway trees, so you're at 24 trees. I mean, just around.
Yeah, that's roughly how I got to 25, roughly.
Well, back to my other question, instead of jamming them in somewhere where it doesn't make sense, why not put them outside?
Would need to be offered.
Well, yeah.
I'm just making a comment.
Yep, you can throw that out there.
And I'm reiterating it.
But there are plenty of places, but there are plenty of places, like up front, there's, I mean.
25 trees, that's 500 bucks.
STACK suggested a few areas.
Yeah, STACK suggested three areas, so there's plenty.
Well, one area they suggested was along the Manor House driveway, which we think is ridiculous.
Which I, I don't agree with.
Why would you, why would you change the look of that?
No, I thought there was one at the entrance was another identifying place.
The entrance is always.
In there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're proposing to infill there.
Yeah.
And we're also infilling where that old cottage is and where that tennis court is.
So how many trees are you proposing to?
Several dozen, I think.
Those trees aren't in the count.
Those aren't shade trees.
They're not in.
Oh, oh.
Well, no, they're a whole combination of things.
But they should do that anyway.
They're meant to, those are meant to fill in to become large shade trees that match with all of the other shade trees that are around them.
So are we good with 25 or what are we?
I don't know where they're going to.
What about that, didn't the STACK propose a curve, curve in the driveway off Devon's house or something? Didn't they propose something?
Where are the trees?
Like in.
There's trees on one side, but not on both sides or something, I forget. No, up.
So there's trees along the front.
Yeah, there are trees along the roadway, on the up, on the uphill.
That's right, they suggested putting them on both sides and we said we didn't like that idea.
So you could grant a waiver because there was public benefit of a contribution to something? That would be, I'm just suggesting how it could be done, I think.
That's one thing we could do, or they could offer to do.
Right.
We could offer to do that.
45, 500 bucks.
And then, I know you're planning to do some infill along the front entrance, but I know that all the neighbors would love more trees along Canton Avenue. I know you're already doing some infill there, but I know that that's a welcome area.
So is the consensus that on the trees, sorry, Denny, go ahead.
Like where on, along Canton Avenue, I'm not sure I understand what you're suggesting.
Well, you know, just along Canton Avenue.
Between the stone wall and the street?
Or beyond the stone wall.
Into the project site?
Yeah.
We're not, I mean.
Or in here.
That's already.
Like you'd have some. I don't, I mean, I, I know there are some bare spots around, and then there's also, I know you're doing some infill around here, but what they were saying is there's a lot of trees on the inside of this road? What about on the outside of this road?
Right now, the conservation restriction basically comes along the outer edge of the roadway.
Okay.
And that's already heavily treed.
Okay.
And not sure that it's appropriate to go stick new trees in under existing dense.
All right, so what I'm hearing is the applicant should consider a contribution of 25 trees to the Shade Tree Advisory Committee fund or to the DPW.
Or find them on site.
Or.
Or find them on site.
Or find a place to put them on site. You can get back to us about it. Where do we think we are on the curb, folks?
I would like to consider it more.
And what about on traffic?
Same.
Me too.
Okay, so are those our last two items, other than?
Well, there's three.
Three items, rather?
Mm-hmm.
Any other issues that anybody thinks we've not covered? We also are going to hear back about the windows, right?
So we're going to get updated plans, an updated special permit with some sort of placeholder for this, these three things.
Don't, don't forget, we need on the zibbity, we need the window, right? So that's a fourth thing.
Well, how, I mean, we have to vote at the next meeting on the special permit, so how are we going to handle the waiver, three waiver requests? Will somebody propose language for both alternatives, are approved or not approved?
On the fly.
Guess it's going to be on the fly. I mean, the applicant can come back and make a suggestion.
Well, that's what I mean, that's why I'd like. Bill or Lauren or Ned or somebody to at least craft some language for us to think about.
Well, I mean, the issue is that the drawings are not going to reflect if.
The drawings can always catch up.
All right. They won't reflect it in terms of the curbing. I guess the trees are, is another matter. All right, so I think, I mean, even if we had to. All right, so I think, I mean, even if we had to revise the final language for these items, these four items, if everything else is, everybody reviews and is comfortable with, we can make those revisions at the meeting and vote it at the meeting. Does that sound good?
Yes.
Okay.
Lauren, could you try to set this up, since it sounds like a lot of this is going to be done on the wall? Can you try to set this up as a go-to meeting, please? Even if you don't, if you have an account, I can do it for you.
If you don't have a account, I can figure out.
I can do it for you, just coordinate with me. I can use my go-to meeting.
Sure. So you can see us?
No, I just want to see the wall. I don't need to see you.
Ouch.
He's done looking at us. He's all done with us.
You can't watch this, it'll throw you away off.
All right, so then I'll take a motion to continue.
So moved.
To a date, certain, at time, certain.
Well, it's April 25th, I'd say 7:05.
Yeah.